Yeah. Just let me know when he's on the buses.
Yeah, so will it be around permission to enter? Or are you gonna wait till it comes up on?
On the agenda. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Howe?
Here.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Seven present.
First item before us is a special order of business, spotlight on excellence for the summer mathematics program. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to all the parents and all the children being here. It's great. Tonight we'll be spotlighting the K through eight summer mathematics program, and I'm going to ask my assistant, Robin Desmond, to do some explanations.
Thank you, Superintendent Kafawi. Tonight, we are honoring all of our students who participated in the summer mathematics challenge. We had great participation this year, and so we've asked all schools to have a lottery and draw three representatives to come and receive a certificate and a Barnes &amp; Noble gift card to honor their achievements tonight. So in just a moment, we will start calling our students by school up to the podium to receive their certificate. I want to take a minute to just thank all of the parents, guardians, community partners, teachers, school staff members, and the school committee for supporting us in this endeavor. It's a really important endeavor for our students to be sharpening their skills over the summer and striving for continuous improvement. And I want to just make sure that everybody who is a part of this, it takes a partnership, and I want to thank everybody for their support with this initiative. So at this time, we're going to ask the representatives from the Bailey School to come forward, and I'm gonna call each student's name. We're gonna start with Natalia Fuentes. Sophie Grady. Claire Guthrie. From the Bartlett School. Ernay Nola Ajia? Ajiay? Sorah Heck. Joshua Sandovo. From the Butler School. From the Daly School. Javier Gonzalez. Emily Hembray. Gabriel Lamos. From the Lincoln School. Joseph Fromming. Hayden Gaspar. And Japhne Porce. From the Green Elch. We have Damarez Mello. Thomas Lamarck. And Samantha Phillips. From the McAuliffe. We have Abel Cuevas. And Zoe Proventur. From the McAvenue School. We have Aleah Colecord. Nyla Lynn Mebecka. Anthony Pove. From the Moody School. We have Alex Cruz. Ava Peraldo. And Connor Landry. Colin Landry. From the Maury School. We have Jackson Mercado. And Heidi Timoney. From the Merklin School. We have Leane MacCasio. Parina Pu. And Kayden Segru. From the Pawtucketville. We have Trevor Dodge. Jayana Santiago. And Tevin Sun. From the Pine Arts. We have Calvin Baez. Nathaniel Haley. Isabella Seguela. From the Riley School. We have Caleb Bastine. Madison Marshall. Madeline McQuaid. From the Robinson School. We have Gretchen Marks. Zachary Medina. Halina Limnu. From the Shaughnessy School. We have Zeyandra DeRocha. Leonardo Kung. And Kayla Toy. From the STEM Academy. We have Nasara Hang. Monique M. And Caleb Cokey. From the Stocklosters School. Fatima Amid. Ali Amid LA. Giselle Juarez. Eric Di Olivera. From the Sullivan School. We have Emma Burns. Olivia Gallagher. Ashley Vargas. From the Wang School. We have Elmira Drinkowski Men. Alice Mawangi. Enrique Reladis. From the Washington School. Cameron Cludier. Ava Kun. Sorry, that's Ava Cohen. And Aubrey Norith. I want to take a moment to ask for everyone to join me in a round of applause for all of our students' hard work. At this time, we are gonna ask the children to, the students, to come forward and stand with the superintendent, the mayor, the school committee members, so that families can take a group photo.
Right there with the glasses, yellow and blue. Behind the girl with the green jacket. Oh, he's next to you. I think he's hiding.
Okay, I can't see now. Okay. Thank you. The Sandra baby. Pull up your hair, your paper, your certificate. It looks good though. Yes, I do. It's the jaw.
School committee, take a five-minute recess while we clear the council chamber. Hey. He fell in love. He fell in love. I love him, I say, it's about history, man. You'll regret this. Good. Yeah, you gotta keep working him.
How are you? How are you?
Okay, Maeve, come here.
Good, how are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You get lost, that's why you can't go to Disneyland. You'll be, yeah, you'll be at the police station. You won't be.
Bonnie. Maddie's waving to him. Madeline's waving to him, Maddie. She's waving to him. My friend Alicia? Yeah, yes. Did you see what she saw? She was waving to me over there. Isn't it? I love when I see the little boys in their shirts. Those are the cuties. Yeah. Yeah. Alicia's just like babies, like madeleine and animals. Like practically. Yeah.
Well, meeting back to order. The next order of business is the permission to enter. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the permission to enter for November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mr. Hohway, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Any discussion? So, Mr. Superintendent, included in the permission to enter is the contract for Pride Star, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry.
What are we on?
Are we discussing permission to enter? I'm sorry, I didn't.
We can discuss permission to enter if you would like.
Okay, so if we could discuss the contract for Pride Star? I don't have a problem awarding that contract tonight. What I do have concerns about is the amount of time that we will still be working with SPNR in the transition to Pride Star. So I would like to request that we ask the law office.
I, let me, I had a discussion with the law department today, as did the superintendent, and the superintendent's under the stand, has the understanding that will be, the superintendent has the understanding that we'll be voting on Pride Star tonight.
I understand that, but part of my ability to be able to vote on Pride Star is my concern that we have children being transported in buses that do not have that safety feature. Because part of our discussion with SPNR back a month ago was that they could put those, that, I forget what the technology is called.
Checkmate.
Checkmate for twenty-five thousand dollars on their buses. So my motion would be that we ask the law department to negotiate with SPNR about our termination, to make sure that we can get the, put on the buses while our kids are being on those buses. Because what is the timeline? It doesn't, permission to enter doesn't say what the timeline is, does it? I don't remember seeing that.
The current proposed timeline of transition is the February vacation.
Okay. So it's not listed on the permission to enter?
No. No, it's listed on the proposed contract from Pride Star.
The contract we saw from Pride Star, you mean the one that had different options that we discussed at our last meeting, last week? Because at that time, the timeline had not been determined. And I'm not arguing about when we do it, I just want to make sure that our kids are protected in that period of time while Pride Star gets ready. It's my understanding that we can work with, that the law office could work with SPNR to negotiate the termination agreement. We have not voted to terminate them yet, right?
No.
And just ensure, because when we talked with them in early October, they said they could put the checkmates into the buses, it's an add-on to the bus, you know, and just, to me, that's a safety issue that we should be looking at in this, as we go forward with this transition. We were going to do it when we talked about going out for bids, that was part of the motion that Mr. Gendron had added on to my motion, and we all thought that made sense, so why not try to do that now? That's my only concern. I would feel much more comfortable voting to move forward with Pride Star, knowing that those buses are going to be equipped with that checkmate, then that we could work it out, the law department would handle it for us. So that's my motion. Want me to say it again?
Yeah, please.
So I'm looking for the law office to negotiate our termination agreement with SPNR so that we can have those checkmates installed as soon as possible while we work towards the transition to a new bus carrier for special education services.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second then.
Second, motions made, and second, discussion on the motion? No discussion on the motion? Let me just say this before we vote, that we spoke about this in executive session last week, and I thought, and the idea was that we would postpone action until this evening in order to consult with the law department. The law department has consulted with me and with the superintendent today. The law department's understanding, the city solicitor's understanding, is that there is support on the school committee to go ahead with Pride Star. So the executive session that the city solicitor was going to come to, she's not coming to and we won't have to have. So I guess I don't really understand, other than to delay, I don't understand the point of the motion.
If I could just clarify, I'm not delaying this vote at all. I'm happy to vote on Pride Star tonight. I just want to make sure that along with that, that we're doing everything possible to have the current buses, the current situation remedied, to be as safe as possible for our students. And I also spoke with the city solicitor on my way here tonight, and I asked, could we do this? And she said absolutely. It's not.
All right. So your motion is not asking that we delay?
Instead of, no, 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 no.
Just concurrent with?
In addition, right.
Got you.
Because for me, to make this vote, I want to feel confident that we're doing everything right now that we can do. And I have no qualms at all about making the vote on Pride Star. This is in addition.
Okay. Any discussion, any further discussion on the motion, Mr. Hohway?
I would, I would like to just add one thing. We've done a lot of work on this issue for the past month, and I feel that safety for the children is the number-one priority. This school committee stood up strong and told SBR, we're not going to stand for any kid being left on a bus for five and a half hours. And other people have made mistakes, too. I think Pride Star, once we do vote on Pride Star, we're not going to have to worry about the safety of our children anymore. So with that said, I hope we vote on it tonight.
Okay. So Ms. Doherty's motion is for an amendment to the motion to approve the permission to enter. That's the way it would be, okay? If there's no further, Mr. Gendron.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of other questions before we continue. I realize that there's support to move ahead with Pride Star, and I intend to support moving ahead with Pride Star. But I did have some questions that I wanted to get answered, and I want to make sure, in the same vein as Ms. Doherty's motion, that between now and the transition happens, that our kids are safe and that the transportation continues to happen. I know that we had received a letter from SPNR suggesting that they were going to terminate support at the first of the year. And there was also questions about the bond. I don't know how much we can talk about that here on the floor, but I need to know, are we going to be able to continue with SPNR through the February vacation, if that's the date? And what about the bond, which is basically our insurance policy?
I, I, thank you, Mr. Gendron. I had, I had a discussion with the city solicitor today to sum it up, and we have been talking before as well. And the city solicitor assured me that as soon as the school committee makes up their mind which way they want to go, to communicate back to her, and she will immediately start discussion with them for a smooth transition and holding them accountable as per contract, that they have to continue servicing the city to the last day, which if it is determined to be just the day before school vacation in February, so that's the day she would like to hold them accountable. Furthermore, she would address your need, your question, which is addressing, because that was a requirement in the contract, to request from them that until the day that they stop being our provider, they're held accountable for every letter in that contract. And as far as the bond issue or not, that's really a city issue, because the bond goes to the city. The city solicitor is aware of it, she's working with their attorney to act, and I don't want to quote her in here, but just very briefly, she, that this is something she's working on, and she, as far as she's concerned, it's part of the contract, they're obligated to supply, to give us such assurances.
Okay. So that sounds great, except in my understanding, the bond is sort of our leverage to make sure that happens, so they don't just walk out on us. Do we have funds that provide us leverage like a bond would?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's the only leverage, because again, that's, we're falling into the legal territory, and I think the city solicitor is, knows that, and she intends to hold them accountable, bond or no bond, because the contract says they have to have a bond. So, and I know she's been already in discussion with their attorney.
Okay. So one of the reasons we didn't vote on it in the last meeting is because of this issue, and the fact that, you know, we were concerned about our leverage to make certain that SPNR continued their, their job until we were able to make a smooth transition. You seem like you're, you're not concerned that that would be a problem.
I'm not concerned, SPNR is, they don't service only Lowell, they service other communities, and I'm not sure, I don't think, he's a businessman, and as any businessman in any company, they're going to make sure that, you know, one little hiccup is not going to hurt their entire business. So I doubt very seriously that they're going to not comply with the contract, because that's going to hurt them with the other customers, the other communities.
All right. Well, I'll put my confidence in your confidence then, in that regard.
Thank you.
I feel compelled, since this issue has been batted around for several weeks now, I feel compelled to kind of explain my position here. It was kind of thrust upon us because of the incident that Mr. Hohway made reference to, and certainly that was a horrible incident, but it turns out, and that there's been many more incidents, not quite as horrible, and not, nothing that made the front page of the newspaper. But it sounds like there's a long line of issues that we've had to deal with as a community with SPNR and our special needs transportation. In fact, there were many cases, as we've learned, where they just didn't do the job, and we had to pay more money to hire folks like NRT or Pride Star to fill in for them when they, when they didn't show up. So this is a serious problem, and I think it makes sense for, as Mr. Hohway said, us to stand strong and make a change here. So I completely support that. And we were offered a couple of different options here. One was to go with NRT, which is the provider that provides our, our main transportation, our main bus transportation in the city. The other was with Pride Star. And the third was to go out to bid. Initially, in fact, we even voted, I even voted for a motion to go out to bid initially, but as the discussion and analysis went on, I decided that that, for me personally, was not a good option, because I, I think it's time, the more I learned about the situation with SPNR, I think we just need to move on, and move on as quickly as possible to another provider. So I eliminated that option. The second was NRT, which is our current transportation provider. They provide us a, I think, a very, a bid that was, had a reduced cost associated with it, so it was very attractive to us for that reason. And the third was Pride Star. And the thing that I like the most about Pride Star is, A, while the, while the maximum that we will pay them is a little bit more than what we're getting from, the offer we're getting from NRT, it seems that there's great flexibility in their offer, so that by managing the routes differently, we have the power ourselves to save the city money, perhaps even more than we could have with the NRT bid. There's also this software tracking that I think is very appealing to me and interesting. In fact, I'd like to make sure that that gets put into the contract that we go forward with, because that is going to enable not only the district, but parents to be able to track where their kids are and where their kids' buses are. So I think that's important. The other thing I really liked about the Pride Star bid is that Pride Star is an ambulance company. They specialize in, in high-care transportation. So rather than a bus company moving to a higher-care transportation service, we have a high-care transportation service moving into, you know, a volume provider, if you will, of high-care transportation. I really like that angle, and I think that that's going to be good for our special needs kids. The company's locally owned, and probably the thing that really sealed it for me is it brings another competitor into the bus industry in our district. You know, sometimes if you only have one option, you're kind of, you know, your hands are tied, and you can be, you can be charged a lot more than maybe what is, is appropriate. So I think bringing another competitor into this mix really makes Pride Star the best, the best option. So I've given this a lot of thought, I've really analyzed the situation, and I, in my opinion, Pride Star is probably our best option, so I intend to support that motion going forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just to add on to some of the comments that were made this evening, I, I'm happy to, to support Pride Star moving forward, and I think it comes down to high-quality and specialized care that they're going to be able to provide us. And testimonials that we received via email and the speakers at our last meeting really put it over the edge, where I think we're, we're really going to be happy with them moving forward, and it's a, it's a, an area that we haven't addressed, the district hasn't addressed in a very long time. We've had the same provider for a long time, and I think we're, we're taking action tonight to move us in the right direction, and I think we will be happy with them, and I'm happy to support it.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call on the amendment?
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hohway?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Mr. DiCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Any discussion on the motion to approve permission to enter as amended? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hohway?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Mr. DiCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next, under memorials, we have one memorial for William C. McLeod, father of Claire Next, under motions, we have one motion by Ms. Doherty, requesting the superintendent provide the committee with a report on the professional development activities conducted throughout the district on November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, seconded by Mr. Gendron, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself, just looking to see how we use this day, the election day, for professional development for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. Next, under reports of the superintendent, the first one is a response to Mr. Hohway's motion of May third, two thousand and seventeen, regarding a task force for new maintenance agreement and the indirect costs. Any discussion on that? Mr. Hohway?
No, I'd like to just say thank you, and I know this is something needed. The past two days, I visited a half a dozen schools. I walked into the Riley, all outside the Riley, but I talked to the principal, and they had one room, one kindergarten room with no heat. The Sullivan School was really good. The Butler has a boiler that's down. And that's just a few visits. I went with Mr. Gignac down to the high school, and we had a meeting with, we didn't have a meeting, but we met Mr. Underwood there, and I'm surprised he's here tonight, I figured he'd be sleeping. I know how hard the guy's been working on the heating problems. I also know what we need to get our heat fixed. And the city's having a hard time with money right now, but I think after listening to Mr. Underwood, and I feel real strongly about this, he feels he needs about sixty thousand dollars, and he's here to explain why he thinks he needs that amount of money to get all your heat going at the high school. I don't want to say too much, I know this week, I think he spent maybe around eleven grand, and there's been heating problems down there, there's no doubt. The heating, the gym is tough, and back in the locker rooms, there's no heat, and it's cold, and people are walking around with their coats on. But that indirect cost thing that we've all talked about, I think you have to listen to Mr. Underwood right now. Right now, I don't think there's anybody that knows more about the issue than him. And I am a contractor, and I think if any of yous have any questions, he's here tonight, that's the guy to talk to. But this report on maintenance of effort, to me, is great. I just wish we push it a little faster, but I'm still happy, I'm really happy, and thank you all, yes, for working on that. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. So a couple of things jumped out at me regarding the memorandum of agreement, and specifically, I think it's a great idea that we've got this task force together that's going to be working with the city. But I had two motions, it's almost exactly a year ago today, that relate to this. One was regarding the nurses, which my, my motion was to look at a plan to bring the nurses over to our side, since we're being charged off for them anyway, and they're not being compensated at a competitive wage, we're losing them to the other districts. So I just wanted to kind of bring that back up to the forefront. And then the other motion I had was to get the school committee, facility subcommittee, to meet with the city council subcommittee. And as my colleagues may recall, that meeting did happen last November, I think it was the end of November or early November, about a year ago. I'd like to keep that going as well. I know you've got the task force, but I think that when the city leaders get together and talk about it, and it's televised, and the community knows, you know, what the issues are that we're working with, we're able to move more quickly. I think that we did see an influx of commitment from the city to, to try to deal with some of these issues, which, as Mr. Hohway mentions, it's not just the high school that has heating issues, there's many schools. And I would love, since Mr. Underwood is here, if he could give us an update on what's happening at the high school, but I really think that, you know, maybe at the next meeting or in a couple of weeks, or whatever timeframe the superintendent feels is convenient, we need to get a full report about what's happening in terms of heat in all our schools, because we're moving into that season now, and we need to really be proactive as much as we can. So I know that's a couple of comments, but I really do think that we need to have a concerted focus as a committee and, and keep reaching out to the council to deal with these maintenance issues, and to really move forward, not just with one building, but with all our buildings. Thank you.
If there's, Mr. Gendron?
I was just going to suggest that, as the chair of the facilities subcommittee, that we schedule before our next school committee meeting, a joint meeting between the city council and school committee, facility subcommittee, to get a status from Mr. Underwood on the maintenance issues, including the heating issues in the school, and plan for addressing those outstanding problems.
Okay. The, I would tell everybody, in case you don't know, the city council did pass a motion last evening asking that the city manager and that the school department come up with a, with a maintenance schedule, and that that be provided to the city council and the school committee in September, rather than on the first cold day in November, so that going forward, we'll know at the beginning of the school year that all of the schools, that the heating systems and the major building systems, for that matter, in all of the schools are good to go. But, Mr. Gignac, did you want to hear from Mr. Underwood first?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Underwood, could you give us an update on where we stand with the high school, and maybe an overview on the other schools as well?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. So the high school right now, we're still, we're working through the troubles here. When we woke up, first of all, I'd like to start by saying, there was no intent to misinform everybody on the status of our heat that day, and I know that in the paper, it made it sound like we were kind of trying to fudge the truth. What actually happened was, we knew we had a problem with the heating system at the twenty-two building in the freshman academy, which is served by the steam plant, because, and it wasn't a problem, we were having work done on the chimney. So we knew that chimney was not, that boiler was not going to work until Wednesday morning. We also knew that it was going to be very cold Thursday. That boiler did not come online till late Wednesday afternoon, so by the time everybody left for school that day, I think it was just their perception that there was not going to be any heat for that following Thursday. So when we woke up that morning on Thursday, very early, the first thing I seen was Fox twenty-five out in front of Lowell High School. So I immediately went to the twenty-two building of freshman academy. I wasn't even thinking about the nineteen-eighties building, because I wasn't, I didn't know we had a problem there, until the heat actually went on. So when I did the quick walkthrough of the freshman academy in the nineteen-twenty's too, and then a quick walkthrough the high school, the nineteen-eighties building, I made a call to the superintendent and to the city manager, and I said, you know, we have heat, and I also told the, the TV cameras that. It was not my intent to misinform them, it's just that I wasn't aware of the problems, because they were in hidden areas, they were in the gymnasium, they were in the locker rooms, they were in the classrooms. The hallways in ninety percent of the class, the school itself had heat. It was just a couple, there was two units on the roof that were not working, but they serviced a, a good portion of that building, as far as classrooms was. So it ended up, we had fourteen classrooms that did not have heat, the TV studio, the library, the gymnasium, which also feeds the locker rooms downstairs. And that was due to a couple of different reasons. We had two units that were actually broken, and then we had a communications failure that, with the software that actually talks to the boilers themselves. So, bringing us back to today, we've got heat in the li, in the library, I'm sorry, we have heat in the gymnasium, the locker rooms, the cafeteria, some of the classrooms. Right now, we have about eight classrooms that are running with minimal heat, and we have temperatures somewhere around sixty-nine degrees in, in all of the classrooms. The cat, the library and the TV studios still have some pretty cold rooms that have no heat at all, but they're running in the low sixties, because the rooms outside of those in the hallways have heat. We'll continue to work on that. Tomorrow's going to be a tough day because of the rain, so we probably won't be able to get back up on that roof. I have technicians coming back Friday, and we'll be addressing those library areas and the TV studios. But right now, you know, and the other thing, this is not unusual. We've been going through this for a long time at the high school, and if you talk to some of the teachers, and actually any of the teachers, we've had heating problems there for years. So what we really want to do now is, while we've got everybody looking at the school, you know, it's a big topic right now, this is the time to address it. You know, I've met with the software engineers that designed the building, I mean, the, the heating system in, in two thousand and nine, we haven't had any software updates to that system in almost that whole time. And then what happens when you lose communication to a, to a unit, there's many ways to manipulate that unit to get it to run. You jump out the controls, you jump out the software, and that's what we've been doing for many years now. So when you go up there now, you open up thinking this wire is disconnected, this software jumped out, there's, you know, they manipulate them to run. Not that it's wrong, you do what you have to do to get heat at the building at the time, but then that ends up staying like that. So what we really need to do now, and I know Mr. Hohway and I appreciate that, mentioned the, the funds we need now, is we really need to gather, as a, as a school committee, as a, as a city council, and get the funds that we need to get that thing running the way, because there's also a cost savings if it does run correctly. And, you know, last year, I can remember days at a time where DPW employees were going to specific rooms, going up on the roof, rooms too hot, disconnect the, the heating system. Gets too cold, turn it back on. They were actually going back and forth to some of those classrooms on a daily, daily schedule, you know, gets too hot, turn it on, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Same with the air conditioning. So we really need to address this now, before it gets any worse. So, but I think we're, we're, we'll be in good shape for Friday, we may be a little bit cold still tomorrow in a couple of areas, but I'd say ninety-eight percent of that building is, is warm.
So, if I could, are you saying that the only place in the high school right now does not have heat is the library and the TV studio?
Yeah, and a couple of rooms that are running in the, in the, in the mid-sixties. Yeah, and, and a couple of rooms that are running in the, in the, in the mid-sixties. You know, sixty-eight, sixty-seven degrees, but, but I want, I, I, I want to say that very cautiously, too. We worked on that system all day the other day, had everything working pretty well. We had the, uh, we had two different technicians from Train. And when I say Train, Train is the model, um, of the units that are up there, they're the brand name. So we had technicians specifically from that company up there working on it. We worked our way through to the point where we had almost everything running on the computers. Yesterday, we got there and we actually went backwards. The place was cold again, we had lost communications, uh, with the systems again. So, as they were saying, it's a very fragile system, because it has gone through so, so many. It's like your, like your computer. Every time you have to reboot it, you take the chance of you losing a little bit of memory. So every time, over years, every time we've been rebooting the system and manipulating it, you lose a little bit of information, you lose a blimation. And what happened to a couple of those units was it completely forgot what it was doing. Um, and that's the way they explained it to me. And you can remember, I'm not in HVAC, C-Tech, you know, where I'm spending all this time on that roof trying to learn that system. It's a very sophisticated and very complicated system. It's not like the ones you have at your house where you have a thermostat, it goes on, it goes off. Very complicated systems with many different components up there and it needs to be taken care of, um, and it needs the money to keep it up. So if we want to get back to where we want to be, it's going to be, it's going to be some money.
And are you thinking that by Friday, by the end of the day on Friday, we'll be at a hundred percent?
I certainly hope so. I mean, I, 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 I told the parents the other night and I'll tell you tonight, I will be on that roof with the technicians, um, until it gets fixed. Um, again, they're telling me that we, they're, we could probably do it today. It was supposed to have some heavy rain tomorrow, so the two technicians, they're not going to work on the roof in the rain. We could probably have done it tomorrow. Um, so, you know, it's, it's, it's my belief and my thought that we'll be in good shape for Friday.
Can you speak to the other schools in the, throughout the district?
And, and, and that's the other, you know, it's, it's great that we have the parents involved in, in what goes on at the high school, but, um, you know, it's been going on a long time. Uh, we have these same problems in many of the other schools, as you know, and as Mr. Hoey said, you know, it, not as bad, but there's classrooms in, in pockets of areas all over the place, because there's check valves and, and it, everybody has their temperature a little bit different. So you have different check valves in different classrooms that control those things. Check valves go, that may not be getting steamed to that radiator. So we're constantly doing, you know, uh, repairs to schools. There's, I don't think there's a school in the district that has no issues. Um, I know, you know, we, we allocated some money last year. Uh, some of that work has been completed, some of it hasn't been. They're still working on the Rogers School boilers, they're still getting some work to do at the, um, Robinson School. We have a little bit of work to do with the Wang School still. That work has started, but it's ongoing. Uh, although they, they just replaced four boilers at the Merklin School. I, so I'll take that back, the Merklin School is probably running perfect. Oh, the brand new boilers over there. Um, I don't have a specific for all the different schools. I, I, one I didn't know was coming here tonight until everything happened, you know, the last few days and, uh, I really haven't had any time to put anything together in the last couple of days for today's meeting. I apologize. Uh, but I will get a report for you, uh, next time we come.
Okay. Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the sixty-five thousand dollars, that number that's been, that's been put out, what do you anticipate that will pay for? And will that be just for the high school or is that for the whole?
That's just, that's just for the high school and that's just software updates. They gave us two, they gave me two quotes. Uh, one was for a full systems upgrade, it was a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. Um, and I told them, I said, "Well, I can tell you right now, that ain't going to happen." So, what we did is we sat down, we broke it down to what they thought we could get away with to get the system running, so we can actually communicate it with it. And when I say communicate with it, it, there's a computer software program that you're looking on there, it's called the Summit Tracer System. And what that does is, when you go on that program, you can go into each individual rooms, look at the set points, change the temperatures if you're too cold. So, um, in, so you have the summit pr- system downstairs, you have what's called a BCU upstairs. I love when I throw acronyms, makes me feel smart. I'm learning them all this week. BCU building control units, that's upstairs. Then you have a VCC units up in the individual units, so they all talk to each other. Um, and they have a failsafe on them, so that when we do lose communications, those units are supposed to go into what they call default settings. Now, tho- those default settings just run constantly without making any changes. Um, what happened the other day when we lost communications is it's been so long since the, the upgrades, is the way they explained it to me, it's been so long that that system just actually forgot what to tell it, um, so it stopped working. Um, and, you know, we tried to manipulate it, though, you know, DPW was up there on the roof with us at first before we called Train in. We were trying to manipulate it, bypass this, change that. Uh, we didn't have no luck, so that's when we called Train in, um, to come in and give us some, a hand, looking at it. They were not looking to say, "Hey, you know, for thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars, we can do this, what they call the front-end alignment." It's closer like you got, but they would do all the controls and what we thought we needed to be able to control, uh, the units there, without getting into, you know, every single thing. For a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, they replace everything. For thirty-two thousand dollars, they can replace, like I said, the front end of, of all of the stuff. They believe, and I have to listen to them, they're the experts, not me, um, that that will give us what we need. And then the rest of the money, I would figure we're going to need for some controls, because once we do get communications with that, we're going to have to go back into those units, find out what was jumped out, what was manipulated to get them running before the, the computers. So the, I wanted a little bit of leeway for parts and stuff like that. These, this, this type of repairs are very expensive. We're paying these guys seventeen hundred dollars a day to come in and, uh, work on that roof, you know. So we've had, um, you know, Monday, Thursday, Friday, today, yesterday. Um, you know, so it gets expensive very quick. Um, so if we're going to do it, let's get the quote, we'll do it all at once and we're not paying them by the day to just come in and kind of troubleshoot things, um, so.
Mr. Dakota, you're, you're all set?
Yeah.
Further discussion? Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Um, just looking at this past MOU, going back through all the kind of, the details of it. Um, so as I, as, as I'm reading this, so basically the term reported means that it's, the city has paid it and yet it's, but it will count towards our net school spending. Okay, just the terminology. Um, so when we look at like school security services and the changes that have happened over the course of time, um, I mean, wouldn't the auditor have, have had a concern when the, when we were paying directly for school, our student, our, our school resource officers? Because wouldn't this say that the city would be paying that? I know we just made that change, bringing them back to the city, but over the course of time, we've absorbed that direct cost.
Right. Uh, we, uh, this fiscal ye- year report is for the last school year.
Mm-hmm.
And so going forward, you won't see, uh, direct charge for the, uh, secure, uh, police officers or the secure SROs, using an acronym. Um, that will be on an indirect cost, it'll be paid by the city, counting to, towards net school spending.
Okay. So we've corrected it?
Going forward, it will correct itself.
It will go back to what this originally said in two thousand and nine. Okay. Uh, my other question, just in looking at, um, on page two, there's the listing of the operation and maintenance of school facilities. And it lists out a couple of different ones, you know, understanding the, the staffing, that whole package with the, the work order system, and then stone ice removal and trash removal and recycling. And it just brought up for me the question that had come up during our budget deliberations regarding water and sewer charges that we're paying directly from the school department budget. Wouldn't, shouldn't that be included in this? I know we had a conversation about it when we went through the budget.
Right.
I don't ever remember seeing it before.
Right.
Which doesn't mean anything, but it had struck me this year that that seemed like something that should be included right in this area.
Right. What, what's going to happen is, we are going to, uh, get reimbursed for those costs from our food service revolving fund.
A hundred percent for water and sewer will come from that?
Yeah, and it's based upon the indirect cost of a percentage of the utilities for heat and electric, uh, gas and electricity. So we're taking a portion of those expenses, getting reimbursed on our side, which, and the only utilities we pay is for water and sewer, directly.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why the credit is going against the water and sewer account.
Mm-hmm. But the, it's the, the revolving food services fund that's actually paying that?
Right, right, exactly.
But, if it was being paid for as part of this, as part of school maintenance, we would then have the opportunity with our, our food services funding to spend that money in a, in another way.
You, you are right, Mrs. Martin. Yes, Ms. Martin, because we, uh, I, I do not know the answer to your question as to why the auditor had not, you know, flagged it before. They should have flagged it. But I do know that when we started talking about this, that, that's actually what got me to talk about this, is that I noticed that we are paying a lot of the charges that in other cities and towns are, are handled through the indirect costs. So now that we know, and we started the discussion, we will be bringing all of these into, into, uh,
So we'll be able to include both that, the water sewer question as well?
We should be able to do that, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
Uh, yes. On the heating issue, um, students have noticed a big difference between last week. Last week, um, it was real uncomfortable and it's hard to kind of focus in class when you're sitting in a freezing room. Um, but we do appreciate everything that, um, the task crews have done, um, to fix the heating problem and we're looking forward to having a hundred percent warm classroom, so thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Okay. Ms. Darny.
Uh, on that note, I'm wondering, do we need to make a request to the city to provide the funding for that, uh, software upgrade? How should we handle that? Is that something we should do tonight?
I, I don't think you need to do that. I think that will just happen without, if you want to request it, you can, but I don't think you need to do that. I think that, that, that the city will spend that money to do that.
Yes. I, I, yeah, go ahead. I had a conversation with the city, uh, officials today regarding this, uh, the thirty-two thousand portion. So they're in, they're, um, most likely will pay for the thirty-two thousand. It's got to be approved by the city manager, and I had discussions with the CFO this, today. Um, and then certainly, uh, the additional thirty thousand that Mr. Underwood is talking about will present that for payment to be made by the city. So that's in the works to your question.
Thank you. And I appreciate that the attention and the quick turnaround with the high school, but as Mr. Underwood mentioned, there are many other schools. I got a, uh, I don't know if you saw the email we got through the website about the Washington School being freezing cold, so I really do want to, if we could try to come up with a, as Mr. Gendron mentioned, some kind of meeting, getting us together and really looking at the report that Mr. Underwood's able to provide to really prioritize heat for all our schools this winter.
Thank you. Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for the superintendent or Mr. Frisch. So regarding specifically operation and maintenance of school facilities, do we audit, uh, those costs or do we just take the total that they give us? Do we have any detail?
Yes, they provide the detail for us in the general ledger. And then we can, if we see something, we can ask.
Okay. So you can pull that right in unison?
Right. So we do have the, we do receive a binder, which is about this thick, and that has all the detail behind the, the charges.
And we're only charged when a work order is completed or signed off by a school department official?
They, they, they charge us for the time that they spend.
Right.
So their law contains the time that they spend there, so it's, answering your question is not easy. I mean, yeah, on an accounting basis, it's easy to say, yes, we have the ledger to do that, but do we really do have the ability to audit exactly what the worker did? As, as you and I would know it, if we were to hire somebody for our home.
Right.
We agree on a price and you're going to sign off only when the problem is solved. No, we do not do that. So we get, we get a ledger to say, this is what we, our workers in the city have worked on, this is what it costs, you guys can look at this anytime you want. But in some cases, maybe it could be that the problem was never solved or the problem was solved. It's really hard for us to go back a year later and try to figure out exactly what happens. I would love to see a system that works where, uh, city or not, or vendor, that we would have a check-off by the principals to say, yes.
Right.
This problem was resolved.
And I, if I could, I think there's language in this existing MOU that, that basically says that. So it says that the figure in, uh, shall be, uh, that figure shall be the total services completed and closed within the given fiscal year as documented in the work order system. And then later on, it says, uh, by a school department employee. So I just want to make sure that we, whatever negotiations occur later on, when I'm gone, that you include the fact that a school department employee is going to approve or accept the work that has been done. Because I know there's, the work orders, if you look at the list, some of them have been on, going on for years and years. And I know for a fact that we've paid for some of that, even though it hasn't been closed out. So it's just, it's just in order to make sure that we're, we're getting the, that we're actually paying for what we're receiving and that we're, we're able to somewhat audit, uh, what we're paying, what we're actually, um, receiving, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion regarding the superintendent's report on, uh, Mr. Hoey's motion? Uh, hearing done, we'll move on to, uh, the second item, which is the second report, which is a response to, um, Mr. Gendron's motion of May seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, regarding free LRTA transportation for Lowell High School students. We have a registered speaker.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Richmond. Um, I'm going to preface my remarks by brief.
Mr. Rich, Mr. Rich, address too, name, name and address.
Okay, Jonathan Richmond, forty-six Lyndon Street, Lowell, Mass., oh, one eight five two. Um, I'm just going to preface my mark, remarks, um, for those who didn't read my letter to the Sun, uh, to say that when we compare walks of twenty to thirty minutes with fifteen-minute warm bus rides, uh, a choice of, of going to Cooley wouldn't have been so bad. But what I want to do now is to quote a parent who just put a comment on one of the, um, Facebook pages that deals with Lowell educational issues. And what's very interesting about this comment is that this is a professional parent who wasn't aware of some of the impacts of poverty and was suddenly shocked by seeing it. She wrote, "Two weeks ago, I drove to wa- walk in the pouring rain. I had just my dau- left, dropped my daughter and her cousins off at Lowell High School. It was raining buckets. There were kids walking from Chelmsford Street. They had lanyards, they were walking to the high school. No umbrella, no raincoats and completely drenched. Can any of you ever imagine how those children learned that day? Cold and soaking wet. Could you imagine working that way or letting your child attend school that way? Most of the parents I know wouldn't allow that, because we have the means to prevent that." Now, the key thing about this is that she's suddenly recognizing something she didn't know before, that there were kids that are deeply, uh, affected by poverty. Uh, and I think one of the issues for the school committee in the school district is to have more recognition of the deep, uh, and wounding poverty that affects a lot of the kids, uh, on a daily, uh, basis. Uh, I think that there is a need for overall reform, uh, of bus transportation for Lowell High School, assuming it is staying in, in the downtown area. Um, it's complicated, given the congestion, and it's also complicated by the fact that the LRTA is currently pretty well at full capacity. Also, many of the services in the morning do not go directly past the high school, but they go to the Kennedy Center. So it's, it's not a convenient service and I think, uh, at some point, we're going to have to face up to the need of a purpose-designed school bus service that, that addresses the, the deep needs we have here. Uh, I would say that providing bus passes on LRTA is an appropriate short-term measure, uh, but I don't think it should have any restrictions. Uh, in fact, I think it's cruel to suggest that it's okay for kids to walk, uh, for more than a mile outside the months of January to March. I mean, what is it, you know, thirty-first of March, the kids are on the bus, and then the first of April, those who can't pay for it are, are walking. I find that, uh, problematic. I think it's equally problematic to take an arbitrary one-mile definition. Uh, what about kids who have to walk three-quarters of a mile in atrocious weather, when professional parents would never allow their kids to do this? And this is the point, that many of these, uh, children do not have parents in a position to get them to school or even to guide them. In many cases, the parents may even have left the home before, but, but before they leave. The kids are very much, uh, on their own. I've seen some extraordinary kindness around. I'm friends with one Cambodian family and they take a Hispanic neighbor's kid to, to, to school each day so that he doesn't have to suffer in these ways. But many families cannot cope, um, with daily life, let alone money for bus passes. And, uh, their kids unfortunately will go out in the cold, uh, often insufficiently dressed, unless there is another option. So I'd, I'd suggest everyone just thinks about it in terms of what they would do for their own kids, you know, do to others as you would do to yourself. Uh, you wouldn't want your own kids to go out and get frozen and sick. So try to help families who are unfortunately not in a position, uh, to avoid this, to get their schools, uh, kids to school. So in summary, I think we need to start planning for comprehensive school bus service reform. Uh, but for now, I think there's a need to hold discussions with the LRTA on increasing capacity. It's not just going to suddenly happen, this really needs, needs to be done, so that more kids can be transported and find a way to offer free bus passes to any fam- And find a way to offer free bus passes to any family that requests them and without any restriction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion regarding the superintendent's report in response to Mr. Gendron's motion? Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the intent of this motion brought up several months ago was to try to provide bus transportation to any child that didn't have it or didn't have transportation down to Lowell High School. The, we had some subcommittee meetings and some teachers talked about some of their students who had to walk in the freezing cold, two miles to school, because they literally couldn't afford a twenty-dollar bus pass that month. So, so this is the intent, to try to address that situation. The, the goal would be to do this for everybody in the high school, but, you know, under the budget restrictions that we're under, and especially this year where we already have a, a set budget, I had asked the superintendent if he could come up with a plan that would address the major problem, and I think that this is a good idea. I think that starting by looking at kids who are outside a certain radius from the high school during the winter months would be a good idea. You know, we don't know how many requests we're going to get for these passes. I suspect that, you know, we will get less than we think, in which case, I hope that maybe we can be more lenient with those restrictions. Maybe we can extend into April, or maybe we can reduce the, the radius from the high school, in which we allow it. So, so hopefully we can, you know, we'll start this, see how it goes, and then, and then flex with it as time goes on. And then next year, hopefully, we can look to institute a situation where any kid that needs a bus pass to get to Lowell High School can have it. We're lucky to have the LRTA here in Lowell. It's an asset for us, and we should be leveraging it. We are leveraging it, but I think we can leverage it even more. So, so that's my feeling on it. Thank you for the report. My question would be, do we need to do some type of a budget transfer or something to, to address this? Or is there, Mr. Frisch is raising his hand over here, so if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, we'll let him respond.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gendron. I do have one correction that I need to state. I passed out a revised report. When I said one mile for the sixty-five-thousand-dollar budget for eleven-hundred students, it's really a mile and a half. So, so the same dollar, sixty-five thousand, but it was a mile and a half. And that's the same radius we use for middle school. We bus after a mile and a half at the middle school. So with that, just one change from a mile to a mile and a half. And just keep in mind that the sixty-five thousand is an estimate. Let's reevaluate at the end of the year, and then we'll be in a better position to come up with a new recommendation for the following year. So this is, is like a pilot, and we'll see how this flows.
Very good. What about the, the budgetary, you know, do we need to make a transfer to a different line item, or is there a line item that's appropriate that we can just tap into?
No, I'll be making a budget rec, uh, transfer recommendation.
In a subsequent meeting?
Yeah, in a subsequent meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This twenty-dollar bus pass is for, is for every day of the month, not like all access. Have we had conversations with the LRTA to perhaps offer a school-only bus pass that works Monday through Friday or at a different rate?
We, we've put in calls to LTRA. We haven't mentioned that, but we'd be, it's a, certainly a good idea. Would that be, you know, to your point, would that be less than twenty dollars?
Right, and then we could offer it longer, more kids.
Yeah, so be happy to inquire about that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Doherty.
I think that we're all aware that we really need to look at transportation overall. We need to look at our zoning, we need to look at how we can do it more efficiently, not just the LRTA piece, but the whole regular education transportation. Because I, I'm shocked to hear that the middle school's one point, one and a half miles. I thought it was three-quarters of a mile. Anybody that lived over three-quarters of a mile got regular ed busing. Are you saying it's a one and a half miles for a middle school student?
We do bus middle school, but I think there are some middle school that we don't bus, the older kids, and so I have to, until they're a mile and a half, that was what I was told.
Maybe that number has changed from when I remember it. But that just seems a very long distance for a middle school.
Sure.
Child to not be eligible for a bus unless he lives one and a half miles away or more. But I, I, as I said, we're not in the transportation business, but we need to be looking at transportation overall. I totally support Mr. Gendron's motion here with trying to help kids get to school who have a long walk, especially in the winter months. And I think one other option we could be looking at to expand that scope is instead of just offering it just in terms of distance, but anybody who has demonstrated need, but that might be more complicated, I don't know. But for now, I'm totally in support of doing this, and I guess we'll look for your recommendation of where you would find the funds. Because right now, that's the issue. We're going to come up with sixty-five thousand dollars that we hadn't budgeted for.
Right, and I'll be bringing that at the next school committee meeting, if this passes.
This is a really great motion being put forward. I think this is a really good start to offering free bus passes, but ultimately, I think myself and other Lowell High School students would like it to be more inclusive, if the budget allows, for more students who live in a closer proximity to the high school. I mean, so many students are coming in and out of the high school all the time, a lot of students are coming back. We're all aware that it gets a lot colder at nighttime. And for kids, I mean, three-quarters of a mile is a long walk in thirty-degree weather, so I think ultimately, I'd like to see this get to a more inclusive radius. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could physically afford it, I would opt for the larger cost for the whole school year, instead of just the, the three winter months. But I question the twenty-minute equivalent of a walk. I've, I've seen kids walk, and there's no way they're going to walk a mile in twenty minutes. It's going to take a lot longer than that. So I think these walk, the, the walk timeframe, I think is a, is a little bit off in terms of how much time do they actually spend having to walk to school? And then add, and add into that mix, bad weather, snow, ice, non-shovelled sidewalks and, and the, and the like. So I think that, I think we should be offering this for the whole year anyway. But I know physically, we can't afford it, it wouldn't be practical this year anyway. But it's a start, and I agree, it's a great start. Thank you.
Mile was, there was a, most, two thousand, approximately two thousand students qualified for a mile, so.
That cost me. I mean, you're saying for a mile and a half, it'd be sixty-five thousand dollars? Did you project it?
Yes, so you're looking at essentially double, the sixty-five. If you did it for a mile, it would be, yes.
And did you do it for less than, less than a mile?
No.
Okay. Are you going to be able to look into Mr. Gignac's suggestion, that we can contact the LRTA, that we can do a restricted bus pass? That, that seems like a great idea.
Yeah, I'll definitely ask, and, you know, we'll, we'll see what they say.
Is that something you can get, like, in the next meeting?
Oh, definitely, I will, yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor. I can't hear you that well, I don't know if it's just me, but I, I just wanted to.
Glad to turn it back on. How about now?
I, I want to just mention something that Mr. Nutter just told me, that we, our current policy is, for K to four, they have to live three-quarters of a mile, and five to eight, one and a half miles to qualify for a bus pass. And apparently, that's better than the state requirements, but it still seems like a long distance, especially, think about a first grader walking three-quarters of a mile in January. So, and just in terms of the student bus pass, I, I believe that twenty-dollar rate is the discounted rate. But it'd be worth checking up with them, but I think that is considered the student bus pass.
Right, if we.
Just wanted to add that to the mix.
If we can work a deal where, with the volume that we're purchasing, who knows? It's never.
Oh, it's worth, definitely worth.
Never wrong to ask for a lower cost.
Right.
Any, any further discussion regarding this report? Hearing done, we'll move on to the enrollment projection, any discussion? Hearing done, we'll move on to the.
Don't we need to vote on whether we want to move forward with this? Because Mr. Frisch is going to recommend where we'll get the money. Shouldn't we vote if we want to move forward with this?
December's coming up, yeah. This was just going to be a budget transfer that was just going to happen.
We don't, we haven't got it budgeted, we're going to need to.
I think it will come up at the next meeting, right?
He's going to propose a budget transfer at the next meeting.
Did you need a vote this evening?
I would, I, I agree with Ms. Doherty that it would be nice to have a affirmative from the school committee. I see everyone's nodding, but just for the record.
I would vote to.
Take a vote.
To move forward with providing LRTA transportation buses for high school students within the required limits.
Seconded by, seconded by Mr. Gendron, discussion? All in favor, all opposed, so voted?
It has to be.
Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, enrollment projection, is there any discussion regarding enrollment projection? Hearing done, the next is a response to Mayor Kennedy's motion of March first regarding parking spots for veterans at Lowell Public Schools, any discussion? Mr. Gignac.
Just one question. Did you intend to, I thought you intended to have parking spots at all the schools?
The Veterans Commission requested a parking spot at every school. I think there are a lot of schools where that's just not feasible.
So this is just a first.
One that comes up to mind immediately is the McAven, where parking is at a premium there, the way it is now. So that to, to dedicate a parking spot for that purpose just isn't.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to item seven point five, the superintendent's report regarding the response to Ms. Martin's motion of November ninth regarding the status of the state of operations at the Robinson Middle School. Any discussion? Ms. Martin.
Could we have a, a report, a verbal report, just to summarize what we were provided with?
Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, we, as you know, we just hired the new team, leadership team in, in the Robinson. Both principal and assistant principals were new, and this was one of the schools that was bordering, you know, the levels between three, was always three, but really scared of going four. So we decided to put a great deal of attention to try to see where the problems are, resolve them, and hopefully get it, get into a better place. I have, I've spent myself there the better, part of a week, where I moved myself, my office there, to try to get to know exactly what's going on, and spent a lot of time with the teachers, attended several common planning time meetings, and seen from myself, you know, what's going on in the cafeteria, the hallways, classrooms. And I dispatched our team, I asked my two assistants to co-lead an effort to resolve this. We agreed to do several interventions, and, and I'm going to ask Deputy Durkin and Assistant Superintendent Desmond to present some of the changes that we've made and some of the interventions we've done.
So, thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. For, as far as, from the Office of Student Support Services, we have district support specialists who support all of our schools. That, one particular district support specialist is going to provide targeted assistance, actually already has begun providing very specific assistance to the Robinson School administrative team, serving in the capacity of a team member to help support that team. Additionally, our attendance monitor and officer are, are supporting, have been working with the, the team to establish a solid attendance team that will look at the attendance at the school, because that is an area that we've identified that really needs some focus area. Additionally, the district support specialists will be working with the, the school's positive behavioral intervention and support team to augment their work as they go out to DESC and get trained, and to keep the momentum going in the school around that initiative. And lastly, they'll be, she's going to work with the PBIS coaches, which she does district-wide, but monitor that progress as well. Also, our district attendance team has developed a, a Google Doc that they're going to be, they showed it to me, it's amazing, it highlights students who right away are not showing up to school. They've actually created that for every school in the district, and they'll be identifying, working with the team and identifying interventions to get students back into school very soon, rather than waiting to find out that, you know, the students miss way too many days and now we're trying to catch up with their education. So those are some of the supports that, from the Office of Student Support Services. I'll turn it over to Ms. Desmond to speak about the curriculum pieces.
Thank you, Deputy Durkin. From the curriculum end, we have teamed up with the Department of Ed through a competitive turnaround grant. The Department of Ed has offered high-needs school systems, the opportunity to apply for turnaround funds for level-three schools. In the past, it used to be only available for level-four schools. So the funding is not as, as great as was provided for level-four schools in the past, but it's a significant amount. So we will be using that funding to support best practices, best turnaround practices, and improve student learning outcome practices with the teachers and the leadership team at the school. We have had several initial meetings with our Department of Ed turnaround representative, who has come into the district, Deputy Durkin, myself, the leadership team at the Robinson School, which is made up of the building-based administrators, special, building-based special ed team, special education team, and some teacher leaders to talk about ways to improve best practices there. We've also, from the curriculum standpoint, have had the curriculum coordinators out there one day a week for the entire school day, providing targeted professional development in the content areas for that day during academic CPTs, which is directly provided to the teachers during their common planning time. Along with that, we, as a district, and I provided the documentation back in, at the end of August around the mentoring program that we were providing, because we had so many new leaders in our district. And so that program is also being implemented at the Robinson School, and the mentor principal is Mr. Matt Stahl from the Wang School, and he has spent a significant amount of time there recently mentoring the new team, because it is a new team, both principal and vice assistant principal. So he has been there mentoring them as well.
Yes.
I'm sorry, not to be remiss, I, I did, additionally, the special ed department has identified a team to work with the special education teachers, after-school hours, to support them in providing instructional strategies to students who have various needs at the building level. Also, securing some special education staff to support them and Project REED training, reviewing all IEPs with the team so that they can ensure that the targeted assistance is provided to the, the students. And additionally, just as the district support specialist is doing the, one of the special ed assistants is working directly with. with the Robinson School Administrative Team and their special ed team to support them, to strategize how to best support students and their families.
In addition to that, if I may add, that we've also used some of the fundings available through us through the turnaround, funding some of the grants, and we hired a temporary security guard that we made sure that the person they sent us is trained in child restraint, because we're dealing, about dealing with children. This security guard is, works mostly at the beginning. We want to make sure that the drop-off, we've heard a lot of complaints of drop-offs at the buses and arrival of kids. So that's one more adult, of an authority figure that's there, and also during dismissal. And in between, this person also is roaming the hallways to make sure that there are no kids roaming the hallways unless they have a pass justified to go from one place to another. So this is a temporary measure, of course. We're going to try to, the goal here is really to try to change a little bit the culture of the school. And the reason we brought one of our veteran and successful principal, Mr. Stahl, is obviously working in some of the schools. It's working well. So the idea is how do we get the culture to change here so it can start working the same way as it works well in the Wang School or the Daly School, for that matter. So we, today, Mr. Stahl gave me a report during, he spent considerable time there, I think a few weeks, and gave me a very positive report of what is happening. And I think we're on our way of doing it, making success out of it.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the information. I appreciate it. Just a couple of quick questions. So in terms of the level-three turnaround plan development, now, does this mean that we're basically going to be applying for this school in the next round? Or that you've already received funds? That you received them kind of outside of a grant cycle that they've already been taken in?
So this process started last year. And there was grant funding last year for level-three schools that were in danger of perhaps going to a level-four status.
Like the Green Elch?
Correct, yes. And so this is a continuation where we are, we will be able to, we've been working with Joan Tuttle to do some analysis of schools that are in a level-three status in Lowell, and trying to determine where the high-needs and the high-leverage areas are. And then once we've determined that, Deputy Durkin and myself have been going around with Ms. Tuttle. Once we've determined that, we will put together a plan to move forward for the rest of the year.
So we'd be looking at that to be happening in the next part? Like, after January?
Throughout the year, but we have been allocated the funding.
You have, oh, okay. So what's the total turnaround funds for the Robinson?
The plan hasn't been put in place. So there's a hundred thousand dollars that has been provided to the city, to the school department, for level-three schools. So that wouldn't all specifically go to one school. That's the planned part that we have to provide, is exactly what it is based on the high-leverage, high-needs areas and what we would be allocating each school.
And this is over and above what had gone to the Green Elch, which was a discrete grant?
Yes.
So a hundred thousand dollars basically to be used against the, our level-three schools across the district?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually just heard yesterday from our Accountability Director, Nan Murphy, who's working with Joan, that it's actually going to be a little bit more than a hundred. I think they're talking around maybe a hundred and forty or so. The minimum is a hundred guaranteed.
So that will be happening. One of the things that had prompted this motion in the first place, as I had mentioned, was around the mentoring leadership that's going on. So is it, a mentor, and the way it's being described tonight doesn't sound like what I had heard, you know, call it fake news, whatever you want to call it. So, but just to be clear, the principal, who is functioning at Mr. Stahl's previous school, the Potackville Memorial, yeah, Potackville Memorial, is still an assistant principal, is not functioning at a principal level?
Mr. Wang is, the Wang School, Mr. Stahl is going back on Monday. There, so the assistant principal, who was just filling in, is an assistant principal there.
So there wasn't a chain of promotions with people bumping up? Again, this is what I'm hearing. So having not gotten any information from the administration, I asked for this report to find out.
That's okay.
So I'm not saying it's true. I'm asking you to just let me know.
No, Mr. Stahl, you still have your job, don't worry. He's going back to it.
Okay.
Are you all set? Okay. Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a tremendous report, and thank you so much for the report. But the one thing that kind of sticks out to me, and, because it's something that I believe is really contributing solution to issues with struggling schools, is engaging parents. And there's only one line in this whole report that even refers to parents. It's mostly staff work, staff work, this kind of work and that kind of work. And I'd like to see that approach used a little bit more within some of these struggling schools, because you want to get success in your schools, engage those parents, get those parents involved. And I think if we don't get them to be involved, it's going to be a struggle, it's going to be uphill battle through the whole thing, trying to improve any of our struggling schools. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gignac. You good? Any further discussion? Yes.
Just before we close, I think it's worth acknowledging the staff at the Robinson School. What we've all observed is it's a very dedicated staff that is committed and wants to make the change. Mr. Stahl has reiterated that to the leadership team as well. So we want to commend them for their work and say, keep going.
Any further discussion? If not, the next report is a response to Ms. Martin's motion of September 6th regarding the status on the declaratory judgment. Any discussion? If not, we'll move on to the quarterly report on motions. Any discussion regarding the quarterly report on motions? Mr. Hoi.
Yes, I just have one thing. When I looked through this, I don't have the exact motion that I wrote. It was something about fixing or helping repair the HR office. I had a motion on that, and I don't see it in this. So, it's not in here.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I will have staff review the tapes back and see if we missed any motion. We'll make sure to include it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion regarding, Ms. Martin?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of mine. One was on page 2, number 10, the delays during the FY 1718 budget process. I just didn't know when you had presented that on the floor. It cited that the mayor presented on the floor completed, and I don't recall that happening. So I, which is why I had continually asked for this motion and brought it up again and again. If you reported and I missed it, I just wanted to know when that was, so I could go back and find the answer.
Just give me one second.
Sure. Page 2, number 10? Who's the one regarding the budget that happened during the budget process?
Was I supposed to provide that report?
It's being, it cites that you already did it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this motion was when we were requested by the city solicitor to cancel a meeting. It was a meeting that was called, and there were a couple of things to be covered at the meeting. One of them was a budget, another one was a contract, my own contract, and that meeting was canceled by the city solicitor. And I had asked that we do not cancel it. The city solicitor said, no, we have to cancel it because it wasn't called properly, whatever. And then I think you came up with a motion to understand, and then, Mr. Mayor, you presented at one time, which was just verbally, you had presented that you had talked to the city solicitor and you had instructed us to cancel the meeting. And I don't remember the words, the explanation you gave exactly, but I'm pretty sure it was done. And we can, again, same thing as I said earlier, we can have the staff look through the tapes and tell you which day.
I would recommend it, because I mean, I asked for this again about six weeks ago, and it was listed as incomplete at that point. So I don't know if it happened in the last six weeks that you made that presentation? Doesn't sound it from your explanation, so I'm not...
I'm sure that it was a formal presentation. And I think that I just gave you an answer from the podium, and the answer was that the meeting had not been posted correctly. And so, so on the advice of the city solicitor, instead of going forward with the meeting, which included a public hearing at that point on the budget, the decision was made to just cancel the meeting.
That's not my recollection of how that had gone down, and it had been one of the primary concerns during the budget process, that it had delay, the delays that were attributed to, you know, that we weren't getting the information in a timely way. And then the meeting was just canceled, and there was no... I don't recall getting that information at that time. I'm perfectly comfortable going back to watch these meetings again, too. So...
The only, Ms. Martin, the only recollection that I have of any report that I gave on this was what I just told you. And the issue there was over the way the meeting was posted, and whether or not it was posted properly. And the city solicitor had issues with the way it was posted, and so that's why the meeting was canceled. If there were other issues in addition to that, I'm not aware of those. I only, my recollection is that the meeting was only canceled as far as I was concerned, on the advice of the city solicitor, because of the way that it was posted at that time. And it had to do with the idea that because of, it was budget deliberations, that it was going to be a public hearing. And so it was not posted properly as a public hearing.
But it was a subcommittee meeting. We had our public hearing.
I would not be canceling a public, a subcommittee meeting, unless it was a committee of the whole, because I don't serve on any subcommittees.
Well, we've canceled a number of subcommittees, but in that specific case, I believe it was a finance subcommittee that was canceled.
I have never canceled a subcommittee.
No, if I may, Mr. Mayor, it was not a subcommittee. It was a regular committee meeting. Because I remember clearly taking the posting, because I was against post, I was against on the record to cancel it. I took the posting and even sent it out to the Attorney General's Office to review whether it was legal or not. And the, I, we discussed it, I discussed it at length with the city solicitor at the time. And then the city solicitor discussed it with the mayor, and we got the request to cancel it. So we canceled it. It was in the subcommittee, it was a regular meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll go back through and...
I don't serve on any subcommittees, so I would never cancel a subcommittee meeting, since I'm never, I am never there.
Well, just referencing the personnel subcommittee that got canceled about, you know, a month ago. I mean, we've certainly canceled subcommittees.
I did not cancel that meeting. Somebody, you know, maybe the chairman and the personnel committee canceled it, but I certainly did not do that.
That's me, so I probably remember it. But it's okay, it got canceled, and it's certainly not germane to this issue at all.
Okay, is there any, do we have any additional? Yes, Ms. Arty.
Sorry, I have a missing motion, and it was the one I referred to earlier. I made it exactly a year ago, November 16, 2016. It passed six to zero. Mayor, you were absent that day. But it was requesting the superintendent meet with key stakeholders to develop a plan and timeline for addressing the inequity in compensation for low school nurses and the high turnover that results from it. Said plan to be presented to the school committee for review. So I was waiting for that one. If it was presented, I don't know how I could have missed it. But I just want to get that back on the books, because I think that we do need to look at the nursing situation. And I know I dropped one with the report card, so I'm not infallible here, but this was a real motion, and it's not on the quarterly reports at all as being completed or whatever. So I would like to, you know, we're going to be looking at the memorandum of agreement. That's part of what the task force is going to be doing. So I want to bring this back up, that we need to look at our nursing situation.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, we will look at that. We actually, I mean, we can talk a little bit about it now. I did have a discussion with the city manager about it, about the idea of moving the nurses to our side, because we wanted to remain competitive with the market, and because a lot of them get trained, and then they go to other districts, because other districts pay them well. The city manager has no objection whatsoever. He said, the school committee is welcome to take them any time they want, because he knows that to bring them to our side and make them competitive for the market, you're going to have to pay them substantially more. And the question is really a budget issue. The reason that we never pursued it any longer is not that we didn't know what to do or how to do it. We know exactly how to do it, what to do. But the question was, if you recall, we were facing cuts already in the budget. So to bring in yet a new idea at that time that could potentially increase substantially was something that we didn't think we would be looking at it now for a model that is already working, changing it to cost us a little bit more. Now, yes, not working maybe to perfection, because especially when you lose nurses right before school, because they decided to go to neighboring districts, they pay them more. It's painful. As you recall, the beginning of last year or this year as well, we always had to wait for some...
We would, there's eight nurses...
Yeah, at some point, yeah. Yeah, we went down nurses.
And it's happening all the time. It's a revolving door, because we're not competitive.
It will, and we are more than happy to present a proposal to the school committee during budget time to bring them back in. I think everybody's in agreement, that's okay. I don't think there is any objection from anyone. The question is just to finding the funds of doing it, to do it.
I guess my question was just that I didn't get that report. I didn't get a suggestion about how to do it, or that, you know, what would it cost to, you know, just that whole analysis, so we know what we're facing. Not at the, you know, 11th hour when we're trying to pull the budget together, but really as we go into our planning. It's just something I think it should be...
I'm certain that Deputy Durkin will be very happy to put that report together.
So just to reiterate, we did present, we had nurse manager Beth Moffett here from the city. And she did present the salaries for the nurses and shared, you know, some of the challenges with the competitive, she shared the competitive rates at that meeting. So the one piece that I see that we can add to that is, you know, a potential, what it would cost if we were to meet those competitive costs.
Are you all set, Ms. Arty? Any further discussion regarding the quarterly reports on motions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the presentation of the superintendent, the year-end review. Mr. Superintendent.
Did you hear that? If I may, Mr. Mayor, just a little explanation of the process, because I know for the people who haven't, who have not gone through this or listening at home, a little summary. This process is a two-year process. It started July 1st, 2015, and ended officially June 30, 2017. And this process of evaluation is the one we have agreed to use the state process. And the state process is really the same, whether you're a superintendent, teachers, principals, they all have pretty much the same guidelines, where you identify goals, specific goals, that you want to work with within a year. It doesn't mean that's the only thing you're going to work with. You're going to work with other things. But, and also, the state has a certain number of standards. They have four categories of standards that they would like you to pay attention to as you're performing your work and as you're doing your goals. There are always two required goals. One is a student achievement goal, and one is a professional goal. That is required of everybody that works with schools. And then you can define what you want to do specifically around that goal, those goals. And then there are the, what we, for the superintendent district goals, and you can have a minimum of two, and you can have as many as you want, really, in goals. Now, so these goals are determined for the two years. What I have also circulated to the school committee is what we refer to as the summative forms. So the process is that you look, it's, again, this is just looking at the second year, the combining it what was done already in the first year, where you had already filled out the formative assessment forms. And in those forms that I have submitted to you, you will see the summary of each one of the goals and the standards that need to be filled by you. And the process that we talked about, the timeline last week, was that these forms between today and the December 6th meeting, any member is free to call the superintendent's office, and at any time, we can meet, discuss whatever you want, whether in this presentation or not, or any, anything pertaining to these goals, standards. And then on December 1st... And, and then on December 1st, you know, these forms are due to the mayor's office, and the mayor is to prepare what we, what we call the, it's not really an average, because the state doesn't like averages. They, they talk about consensus. Is a consensus, because you can only have one evaluation by the board, not individual evaluations. Individual evaluations are, you know, should be represented by the consensus. And then on December 6, that the mayor has to present, or designee, has to present that to the community in a public meeting. So that, this is what it is. So the report today that you see is really a two-part report in this one. It's the first part that deals with the, with the goals that we had set for ourselves. And the second part is a little bit of the standards. There's a lot of repetition in between, obviously, because when you're talking about standards of student learning, it's the same criteria that applies to your goal of student achievement. So there will be, and I'll be skipping a lot of that, otherwise we'll be sitting here for a few hours. So I'll start with, with just a summary of that. Again, as I said, this is the second year of the, the two-year process. We've had in these two years, which happens to be also coinciding with my first two years in Lowell, with quite a few challenges that we had. We had challenges anywhere from student, you know, we have that, that incidence that we started last year with. We had a year that, the last two years, we hired, I think, more than ever before, mostly because we have added several CSA programs in, in many schools. We also added a day school. So these are like really serious challenges that, that you have to work with. We had also, also a lot of fiscal challenges that we had to deal with. We did finish out every year well, but before we finish out, we always have issues with that. We, we had, of course, one of the biggest distractions of all, which I didn't even mention here, but is the, the high school thing. We're still dealing with that, and believe it or not, that had a, really a big impact on the functioning of, of, of the, the administration, in, in terms of distraction. What I do want to go, say, though, is that along with these challenges as well, we had a, I don't want to miss one, very important one, which is the bubble of the, the middle school. We've had numbers really higher than, than ever before, particularly in the, in grade fifth, fifth grade that we had to deal with, and there was no plan. There was no long-term plan. I didn't walk into where we had a plan and we just had to follow the plan, because these kids, as I said earlier, didn't come to us now, they came to us in kindergarten, many years ago, for most of them, but there was no plan. So we had to come up with plans on the go. This is not how you normally want to function, that wake up in the morning and say, you know, let's, what do we deal with today? You want a plan. So we had to deal with all these challenges yet. You know, one thing that we're very proud of is, even with these challenges, we did finish both years balanced budgets. In the first year, we had a, we had a substantial surplus that we turned around and invested very, very much into the technology, which we'll see now in a minute how that paid off, in, paid off tremendously for us. And also, the second year, we also had a smaller, much smaller surplus, but we did have a surplus as well. In these two years, it's really important to know that most of the urban schools did not have that luxury, did not have that, those balanced budgets. I remember sitting in urban school meetings where most of my colleagues were reporting on how they had to go back to their communities to try to get some additional funding, so they can balance their years. So we, we, we did very fairly well there, regardless of all the challenges and disagreements we had on the presentations, and whether it was presented well or not well, or, you know, whether, does that, those are just the technicalities. The end result is, we did have fantastic two years of balancing the budget, and we outperformed most of our, not all, but quite a bit of our colleagues in the urban schools. Also, during these two, the, two years where we had substantial challenges, we've also delivered one, two of the best years of Lowell's academically. There's just no way of denying that, when you look at the statistics. And I know some of you even run their campaigns based on that, and, you know, on how well we did in the schools. And, and good for you, I mean, you, you deserve that as well, that credit. But we did have two great years in schools where we had, we had some of the best performance in there. And we put together a team that I think now is a, is a solid team. We have, we still a lot to go, but I think with the good team that we have and the great student, teachers that we have and students, I think we're ready, you know, we, we have a really good start, and we're, we're on our way to good growth. So in the first, the first goal that I'd like to, to talk a little bit about is the professional practice goal. And for us, in the professional practice goal, one thing that was very dear to me is to establish a strategic plan, because you can't really operate an institution of our size without a plan. You need a plan. And a, so we did not have a plan, a strategic plan. So we, we embarked on, right away, on developing a strategic plan, and the first year, we put, we started putting the plan together, and we, we presented that to you, if you recall. In the second year, our focus was really on designing, developing the key performance indicators for each of the, of the, the pillars and each of the goals that we have. Because developing goals without coming up with, with ways to measure them, whether you're doing well or not, is, is obviously not gonna, is just going to be a, a document sitting on a shelf. So that was the, what we achieved there. By now, we have developed with all of our teams, including school leaders, we developed KPRs for all them, all, all of the pillars. The other thing that we focused here on, on this year is really that our district leaders, school-based and central office-based professionals, focus on making sure that their own goals are aligned to the strategic plan, because that's really is essential, because otherwise you, you're missing that alignment piece. You can have a nice strategic plan, but if everybody else is focusing on something else, this, you don't necessarily have that alignment piece. So that was a big focus that we did this year. And, and the third thing, and we did that both in schools, as I said, as well as the central office. And the third piece that really we wanted to do is to make sure that now that you did all of that, is how do you communicate that in, in a very efficient way? And we had started, we, we are still developing the dashboard. If you go to the next slide, it gives you, next page gives you a summary of what's available now on the dashboard, which is going through, continuously going through improvements. It's, it's going to, going to keep improving it and improving it. And what is coming soon on the dashboard. And the idea behind this dashboard is really communication to the public, to be as transparent as we can be on this one, and at the same time, to provide a data tool for our own leaders, school leaders, and, and be able to have a, base their decisions a lot more on data analysis, on the data they analyze. And of course, this data, this dashboard is something that we have undertaken ourselves, building it, so yes, you're going to see some growing pains, yes, it's not going to be very sexy right away, it's gonna, it's gonna take us years to build it. We did not have the quarter of a million dollars that, that some richer districts would have just put in into buying one that's already made and very fancy. So it, but the data is there, that's really the important that we're trying to do. So that's, that's what, ours are focused on, the professional goals, and I think we've done, in my opinion, we've, we've achieved all that we wanted to achieve for these two years. I think we'll still have a lot more to go in this one, and we will continue. It's not that, okay, the goal is done, now we drop that and we move on to something else. We'll continue to do that. The next one, which is really the most important one for us, is that the student learning goal. Initially, we had started the first year to focus on narrowing the achievement gap for all students. I mean, student achievement continues on an upward and stable incline for most schools. I think LPS has seen two shifts already on the, on the testing, the MCAS to PARC, PARC to the, and then back to MCAS. These, these changes make it always very difficult to assess your, your progress, and how do you measure year to year? But I think with a little bit of, you know, algorithms that we can, that our data people work with, we can try to, to come up, even though we're really talking about different, different tests, come up with some comparisons. We've had, again, in this area of achievement, I think it's just, if you want to achieve, narrow the achievement gap, you can't escape, you're talking about really overall achievement and performance of students. And again, in these two years, I believe we're very proud, I know I am, and I know my team is very proud of the two years that we have delivered. We've seen dropout data, attendance rate, discipline data continue to improve. I think we've seen about every measure that we wanted to go up has been going up, every measure that we wanted to go down has been going down. In worst cases, it, it would have stabilized. Just as means of example, just giving you, and the next chart, it's quite hard to read as, I apologize for people who are reading it off their TV, it's really difficult to read it. By the way, we can, this report is going to, once completed and, I mean, cleaned up and everything, will be put online for anybody to download. This is just one simple chart of, of where we are, say, as, as a whole. This is the combined achievement percentile and student growth percentile for this year after the, the MCAS of this year. Comparing this to the urban schools, you see that Lowell median, the median in Lowell is, is really with around a third in, in, in the urban schools in terms of combining the achievement with the student growth percentile. And, but what is more important in here is the color, for those of you who have the color copy, and if you can see the colors, the colors indicate, the green are the better. If you're in the red, that's not so good. And the greens indicate usually that, that the, that you have a positive student growth, because in the area of student achievement, I think the important thing is not just to show that you're having a better performance, but I think you need to maintain and sustain the performance through positive student growth. And that's what really interests us a, a lot.
Can I just ask one question? What, what do the dots refer to? Are those schools?
Oh, I'm sorry, the dots are your, the number of the schools.
So those are the schools? Each school has a dot on the scale?
Right, each school has a dot, yeah. And I know we talk about it later, but this, this is, this has taken you, I have given you also circulated to you as a, as an additional piece of information, the report done by our data analyst, Mr. Schlickman, which has more, a lot more information on the MCAS analysis, and he will be presenting even a more complete report than the one we've given you today on the, on December 20th meeting. I have asked him to be ready to prepare it in a public meeting. The next slide, just again to confirm that we were talking about, what contributes to really, we all know that, what contributes to, to a good student achievement is, is your dropout rate, to try to keep the kids in school. And, and we've had historic lows in the past two years, and, and this year it is going into the same directions. We do not have, yes, the, the, the data reported from, back from DESI, but, but we know it's, it's in the same directions. Quickly on the fourth and the fifth, yes, ma'am?
Just a quick year question, just so I know I'm tracking this right, because it looks like we're, we're tracking different years on different things. So the, like this one, the dropout rate, looking at 1415, and then 1516. So we're currently in 1718.
Right.
So just trying to correlate this with, I'm sorry.
I can, I can.
If you can help me, that would be great.
Share, share that with you.
That'll be great.
The, where, the state reports a year out.
Okay.
So we will be getting the 1617 data in December or January of this year. So we do know numbers, we've, the, the state provides us with data in early October. We review that data and resubmit the data, and then it's reported back out officially in December, January. So you will have that as soon as it's reported out.
So when we did the formative assessment, we were looking at which year?
You would have been for that, what time did we do it?
It would have been, I mean, you've been here two years, so would that have been 1516?
I think you might.
And then we're waiting for 1617?
I don't remember whether the 1516 would have been released or yet.
I'm not sure either.
We can go back and figure that one.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where the, the start point is. I'm sorry to interrupt, thank you.
So again, another measure that we, we look at also and closely monitor is the graduation rate, both the fourth and the fifth, and the fifth, and the five-year graduation rate. Obviously, we want everybody to graduate in four years, but we've got no problem that they graduate in five years, just graduate, I think it's a good idea. And as you can see, that in, so far, the one report in 2015 is, is, is pretty, pretty respectable for, for our high schools. So, and one thing, one other, more measure that I want to talk to that contributes to better achievement is definitely the, the absence rate, because that's where it all starts, making sure that they do stay in school and come to school. And again, the trend is, is, is going down, we want it to go down, we have a little on the 1617, that is where the, the, there were, it's actually, it shows a slightly higher, but that, Deputy Durkin has already reported it to the state, they've actually had errors in calculating in some of these.
I can share what that is. So last year, if you, you recall, you all voted that the Career Academy would become a standalone innovation school. And with that was also a waiver that needed to be submitted. Timing didn't work out for the school, so with the innovation status, the school no longer has time associated with a student being in every single day. It's about competency base. So we are working with the state right now, they will not retract the data, even though we know that because the Career Academy's data was included in that, that it inflated the attendance. And when we look at it, it's much more closely aligned if we remove that data with the, with like about a 15.2 percent.
So again, we know why the error is 16, and that doesn't really concern us, because if we take the, the Career Academy out, the, the data would have shown 15.2.
If I could, on the same thing, so, but 1516 also included the Career Academy. So it's not really a.
No, but it's in the, go ahead.
But however, in 1516, the Career Academy was part of Lowell High School into a much larger population. Additionally, the Career Academy in 1516 had requirements for students being in school like all other students across the district. So it was the changing of that. So we're working with the state right now. We've had conversations weekly for the last two months regarding this, and what they're telling us is that we cannot necessarily get a, a full waiver out, we're still going to need to report it, but they're going to work with us to create an algorithm so that we can get a much more accurate representation for the next cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the next slide is an important one, because it compares us to like, districts like, like us, urban school districts. And you can see that in terms of chronic absences, even with our error embedded there at 16, if you bring it down to 15.2, you'd see it even more pronounced, that we're really doing better than many of the districts that, that are like us, Fall River, Fitch Park, Springfield, Lawrence, and so forth. And that, and that, of course, is a, is a result of all the, the policies, the plans that we've been putting into place. Student Services has been working really hard to make sure that students do come, students stay, don't drop out, and try to come as, as often as, as we would like them to. The next slide is also an important one, because that's the discipline piece. As we all know, and we've heard so much about discipline, discipline goes hand in hand with achievement. If you've got kids that disturb the classroom, the, the whole class loses concentration, by the time you get them back, you lost 20 minutes of learning. So discipline is a really important piece of what we're focused on in, in this administration. And again, you see the trend continues to go down, and we, we, we will work to make sure that it continues to go down. And, and whether it's in-school suspensions or out-of-school suspension. I think you're always going to have some of those, because obviously you want to address the discipline, but the idea is to create a culture where the kids know that it doesn't really serve them well, or serve anybody that they act out in school. And the way, the best way to do it is to get them engaged, and keep them engaged in the classroom.
I, I'm sorry if I missed this, but why didn't we include the graduation rates for 2017? Did you explain that one, and I missed it?
No, I can do that for you.
We can, we can.
We can, we can certainly do that for you.
We just didn't include it?
Just didn't include it.
Okay.
And I think the other piece, when you're talking about student achievement, not only your discipline, your attendance, your graduation, and so forth, you, you can't complete the picture unless you talk about rigor, because you have to have rigor. And you've heard me talk about this before, when, when you're working with students, you, you try to address all the groups. You're going to have several groups of students, you have those that need attention at the, and you bring the tutors, and you bring that help, and you also want to address the upper end, and have as many kids as possible that can have the highest rigor possible. And what we, and, and I know that was an effort that was encouraged by one of the committee members, Jackie Doherty, which brought us a partner to work with a partner of Mass Insight. And I had worked with Mass Insight before, and I'm really happy that they came to work with us here, because my previous work with them was very positive, and I was really impressed by the way they had helped us increase the two, the two things. One, the number of participation of kids who participate in AP. One, the number of participation of kids who participate in AP classes and two, the scores on AP exams. And I, I have high hopes that we're going to be able to do the same thing. And, and, and they were really eager to work with us as well. Uh, so much so that they really discounted so much their cost to Lowell. I mean, we pay substantially less than any one of the other districts they work with because they really wanted to work with Lowell and they were eager to, to work with us. And uh, we're very happy to be a partner. Another, another uh, piece that I think helps in the um, in the, in the overall achievement gap and the achievement measures that we look at is how, the ELL. We're one district that we have a lot of newcomers, a lot of ELL. And uh, that can really hurt you uh, quite a bit if you don't know how to handle them well. Um, so streamlining the, the newcomer process, the assessment process, figuring out exactly where they are, where do you place them? How many resources you need to put? It, it's not an easy task. And uh, and this year, the second year, we worked on it last year, the second year here, we've really put in great deal of changes that absolutely transformed it. And two things I wanna draw your attention to, on September first of last year, we had fifty students, was it? That's September first, fifty students still waiting to be tested, which means they can't go to school. Which means when you put them back in school, you're gonna disturb everybody. You're gonna disturb the principals, they're gonna figure out a way how to handle them. And you, you're gonna have to work with them more. It also strains your resources, your resources to getting more tutors. In this year, September first of this year, there were no students waiting. They were all, all taken care of. We adopted a just-in-time process, they come in, we test. It's no longer like before. So we've really, we've really transformed that part and it's not an insignificant part, it's a major part of what we do and how it affects us in our achievement rating. Uh, another piece that I think uh, we, is, is worthy, noteworthy and is really important is the MCAS two point O, the online. And I remember a couple of years ago, and I know we had a lot of discussions and again, disagreement, agreements, and we all finally went and we, and we had that big investment in technology. That really paid off for us. When we went to, when we invested that technology and I, and I know, again, you, you guys were always, you know, investing pre-modern technology and Mr. Gendron was highly involved with the Technology Committee on that, but that specific year, if you recall, we really invested heavily one toward the end of the year. What it did to us, it has allowed us and enabled us to be able to be fully capable of doing all our tests online. And uh, we were very, really definitely one of the very few uh, urban schools to do that. And we remain as well, so many urban. So that two-year gave us, that investment gave us two years head start. We were able, we were already two years ahead of everybody. So now in two thousand and nineteen, our kids will have that advantage. And when you look at the, Mr. Schlickman's report, he, he points out as well to that. It's that our kids, because this is the second year that they did the online, that really helped them out. They went over that's, that fear of the online and that, that confusion. And we really believe that is one of the reason why we were one of the urban schools that did better on the online MCAS. Maybe because our kids uh, you know, were, were already trained at that in two years in a row. Uh, another thing that we have introduced, which I think is really important, we've introduced a lot of things, obviously in the report, you try to focus only on the few of the important things, uh, is the um, is the reading committees that our SPED uh, program uh, department works with, with the schools, uh, creating this reading committee. What it really is, is really developing for our specialized, special ed students, a special, individualized programs of reading for their level. And it's really important for that because as you know, you miss the reading, you miss, you will miss the math, you will miss everything else down the road. So it, it was really important that, that we, we captured those, those needs for the students. And um, on the next slide, what I really wanted to show you was also a, a, a little bit, because I know most of you feel like me, we're all asking like, but this is great, the MCAS two, we've done well, but how, how do, how do we really compare to the old system and the accountability system? What, what, where would we have been if we were the old accountability system? Now, the state does not, did not use an accountability system this year, except for the high school because they were using the same old MCAS system. Um, also for the high school, high school is still a level three, but the good news is that they have improved. They've moved from the, uh, by two percentiles up from eleven. So that, that's a good news for the high school. But on the other schools, they didn't give us an accountability. But what we did is we took all the measures that they use in their accountability formula and applied it ourselves and trying to figure out where, where would we be if we, had we used the accountability system? This year, we counted the Robinson, uh, the Rogers School, the STEM School, because it, the first two, the two prior years, uh, the three priors here in this table, the Ro- the STEM School was not uh, accounted for because it was a new school and it didn't have all the grades. So this year, this year by, by counting the STEM School, you can see that we know we would, we have maintained the same, the same achievement. And uh, at the level one, we would have had, if we still had the levels, we would have had eight level one schools, seven level two schools and six level three schools. Uh, and the very good news is that none, none of our level three schools is now in any danger of going level four. We pulled them out. So we, not, not any one of them. And I think that's, that's a remarkable uh, achievement in this, in, in a very short time.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes.
Can I stop you right there? On this page, it indicates that perhaps it's just a typo, it says the Robinson, not while.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It should say the Rogers.
Rogers.
Right.
Thank you. Correcting it. Let me put a note of that. I always call the Rogers the Robinson. All right. So um, I think the um, uh, again, I don't wanna dwell too much on the MCAS because uh, the, the MCAS for this year, you, you have a full report on that and we will be giving a public report on the twentieth, we'll talk more about that. But just to summarize it, I think we have now more schools above state average than ever before in Lowell. And um, and, and then I, I think what really helped is all, all these, these achievements and uh, the hard work of the, the teachers and the educators and the, and the administrators who work with them. So, good job and I, I, I know we'll continue on that same, same trajectory. Now, going on to the district improvement goals, I think the one that we had, we had worked with was, the first one was the, in trying to keep increased community engagement and transparencies. We worked on that one the first year. Uh, this year, we really continue to do the same, whatever we had established the first year. Um, all, you know, reaching out to the community, which, you know, participating with the community. Uh, we continue to do that. I think some of the highlights here, and I'm not gonna go through the whole slide here since you have it in front of you, but um, definitely, we, we, we're promoting school PTOs more, uh, school site councils more. And uh, I think we've got to a place where at least now, the principals know it really is important to have those school sites, uh, councils and, and they all report having them. We're also making sure that they, they're up and running on, on the website in way of communicating to the community about them. And now comes the next stage, which obviously you start getting them more and more active and bringing more parents involved as, as uh, Ms. Doherty was talking about earlier, is bringing more parents involved into, into the schools. And these, these two groups are usually uh, the first two groups you wanna work with. Another thing that we made sure that in this administration, we were very, we hold dear is that amongst us, the, the superintendent and the, and the assistant superintendent is that any important event that is school-related, whatever that is, whether it's a school event or a non-school event, it's a community event, but it's school-related, you will always see one of us. Obviously, as a superintendent, there's no way that I can be in all of them. It's just not, not a possibility. And we're, I'm very blessed to have three great assistants, uh, one deputy and two assistants who, who are really uh, very active in that. And between the four of us, you'll always see somebody there representing us and making sure that, that we're part of the community. We're also continuing to be involved in all the, the major groups and task forces in the community. And um, the, so we, we, we continue to look outward in how to become engaged in the community, but we also do our own internal transformations to make sure that we engage the community better. And one example of that is the restructuring of our family resource center. Uh, I think it was um, uh, if I had any doubt that it was a good idea when it was first, we were first talking about it as a team, I now absolutely have no doubt that it was a great idea to separate that into two and focus the family center on engaging and, and supporting the, the families and giving them a, a much more personalized and, and targeted uh, support. I think these family engagement center, I, I, I believe is one of our strength. And uh, again, we, we're very proud of the, what we have accomplished in two years and I believe we'll just continue to make sure that we maintain what we've done, but so far well and continue to hopefully bring more better ideas to how, and how to improve. The next district improvement goal is uh, is, is the, improving the diversity in hiring. More than two-thirds of our students are minorities, we all know that. Uh, our staff is overwhelmingly of one type, uh, white. I think that goes with, with, you know, it's a, it's not an easy thing to solve. It's a problem that every urban school district is facing. So it's not a problem that is just, just for Lowell. Everyone works with that. It's a challenge to all. We're not going to be able to all of a sudden turn around and say magically we're gonna have, two-thirds of our staff is going to be, it's not gonna happen. But the efforts need to be there and we're putting a great deal of effort into that. And uh, but we not only putting the effort, but I think we do have some numbers to show that. Um, if, and if you look at, in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, we hired about thirteen percent of our teachers that we hired. And I focus here only on teachers and, and, and paraprofessionals because they're really the ones who are directly involved with the students on a day-to-day. Thirteen percent of our teachers were, were minorities and forty-four percent of our new paraprofessionals were minorities. And, and I think that's, that represents a significant increase over the previous two years of two thousand and fifteen, uh, and the years of fourteen, fifteen and fifteen sixteen, where the numbers were much lower. I, I think we've heard the school committee. School committee has spoken about this more than once, that they wanted us to pay real serious attention to this and, and, and make sure that we address this. And, and I think we are. Uh, it, is it difficult? It's, it's probably the most challenging things we do, uh, day in, day out. Recruitment in and of itself, without even focusing on hiring successful minorities is very difficult to compete. And um, in, and trying to focus on, on improving the minority ratios is even more difficult to do. But we're still working really hard to do that and the numbers show it. These years, we, we still have respectable, if you look at our recruitment, eight percent of teachers were minorities and twenty-six percent of new paraprofessionals were minorities. The numbers have gone down a little, but I, I think there's a really good reason why. When you look at the, uh, that this year we hired, we hired two, we had two hundred nine hires between teachers and pairs. Last year, we had a hundred and twenty-two only. And that represents a seventy-one percent increase over last year. That's a tremendous task. That's asking people to do seventy-one percent more work with the same workforce. So it is really difficult to try to be very refined and say, yes, I wanna maintain the same standards, I'm gonna go look again for the minorities. It's really overwhelming and I think just the fact that they have achieved an eight percent and twenty percent is, is very commendable on what they did, on what they did. So this area of, 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 of hiring, the, uh, I think we um, not only looking at the numbers, but I think more important to look at is really the initiative that we have put in place the last two years because it is, these initiatives are gonna help conquer and achieve that goal. It, it's um, first we, one of them that we, we, uh, one of the initiatives we're working with is we're trying to bring back a locally district-based certification program. And we've reached an agreement with Desi to offer one in SPED and ELL to start. They're gonna start us out with these two and then they see how we, well, we maintain our records, they audit us and if they're happy, they let us do other fields. Because this will increase, I, I, in my opinion, uh, help us uh, develop our own talent locally. And uh, I know some of the school committee members, I know Doherty, I'm sure others as well, I know Mr. Howie has been involved many times in this, have been working and pushing us with, toward working with other partners, UMass Lowell and MCC and so forth to do that. So one of the programs that we have, that we're working with is to, is to try to get our paraprofessionals that, that do not have yet a bachelor's degree, work with some of the partners. And I know we have, we have an event coming up where we're promoting that and trying to get these paraprofessionals to come and learn. We have universities and colleges coming in to present to them how they can get their bachelor's degree and get financial aid and so forth. Uh, why we're focusing on a paraprofessional, because it happens to be the group that has probably the highest ratio of minorities. So if we can develop our own talent, people who already know how to work with our kids and know them, I think with that, that's a winner. So we have one program that addresses those paraprofessionals who do not have a bachelor's degree. We also have another program with UMass Lowell and Fitch Park State of paraprofessionals who do have a bachelor's degree and we're trying to get them to be certified to become teachers. Few, uh, if you walked in our schools, you probably would have noticed that few of our paraprofessionals are newcomers. And they already have degrees back in their countries, they're well-educated, but they don't have yet that, that, that equivalency in here in the certification. And they're trying to, to acquire the, the, the English language proficiency themselves. So we're helping them getting through the, the, our partners to getting their, their, their certification. And the, the, also we're starting a plan of early recruitment. We, we put a plan into place and have uh, asked HR that really starting right after January first, right after the new year, let's not wait for March and April like others and then, we can't compete that, we'll start right away and start doing early recruitment on that. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Oh, while you're talking about the staffing and diversity, I know I, you're gonna be giving us a report at the first meeting in December about the, an update on the diversity. I'm wondering if you could include the administration as well?
Sure.
In terms of new hires, administrators, um, in that report?
Right.
To just complete the picture.
Sure. Yeah, we will. Uh, and, and then I think it's a, you know, we continue to increase our participation in job, in job fairs, I think that's an important one. Uh, but also we're looking at utilizing online resources. There are a lot of resources out there that now can take you farther places without traveling there, just do it, do it online. And the next district improvement goal is, 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 which is really very important to us, is to develop, and this is a new one by the way. Uh, let me explain a little bit of what I, what I did in here. There, the, in the, in the, um, in the evaluation plan, there is no, no restriction as to in the second year adding more goals. Uh, because as you're trying to work with your goals, you might find out something and say, oh gee, I really should have focused on something. So as we worked out through the first, the first two, we, we, we thought that, you know, we, we would like to get a couple more goals in, in here. And, and shared leadership in that, you'll see some others, uh, when we go, is, is something that is really dear to us. We, in the last two years, we focused very heavily on transforming the professional development of our leaders. It, it, often, you know, if you, you have to really be careful with that, that it doesn't become just a, a bureaucratic checkmark that we've done some PD, that it gets something really meaningful. So this year, we, we did something last year and we refined it this year. The end result of it for this year is that we, we divided the leadership into three parts, the A, B and C. A are all your principals and some of the, some of the uh, people from the high school and um, and then also the C is the assistant, the B is the assistant principals and the C is the rest of the professionals. So, and we targeted that, that their PDs is, is a hundred percent targeted to what is of concern to school leaders, the things that they face in, in uh, and, and we, we've also, uh, we've, bless you, this, this year we've, we've engaged uh, with, with, with RBT research for better teaching and to work with, with the PD. So, and that has been going on really, really well in, in there. And uh, in the cohort C, we took a different approach because the C group is, everybody does something different, it's different expertise. They're all very different. So instead of trying to give them something common, we've been tried over and over before, really hasn't helped much, is we asked them to really take advantage of individual opportunities for PD on, on, on improving their own skills in their area and then bring it back to the group and disseminate that information to the rest who might not be specialized in it, but yet may, may benefit from, from uh, that information. And uh, I think all, all administrative meetings have been redesigned to provide targeted professional learning for school leaders through, through book studies and, and, and action planning and we're getting everybody engaged. We even got Mr. Fresh engaged as well, as we see, and he attends those as well with the, with the principals. In, in the same one, as I mentioned earlier, to, uh, we, we're looking not only at, at participation collaborations of, but we're looking at rigor even then, a rigor. It's not just us sharing experiences with each other, but we're bringing really highly respected individuals and we use, we use our professional development. This year, we use them to bring, to engage in the research for, for better teaching, which is a, uh, works with, they work with school leaders, but they also work, whatever they do, work with school leaders, they, they align that with the work that they do with the coaches and instructional specialists. the coaches and instructional specialists. And, um, we're, we're absolutely also focusing on delivering PD opportunities that are well aligned with the goals, with all these professional goals that, and, and our strategic plan. Uh, all right. So again, the one, a couple more highlights and I'll let this one go and move to the other one, is, uh, we, we, uh, the new mentoring program that we established. Uh, we, DASI has guidelines for mentoring programs. I know when I came two years ago, we didn't really have anything formal at all. In last year, we instituted something semi-formal and this year we made it really formal. Every new principal, we assign a mentor and that principal works with the mentor, um, and depending on the need, they could be less frequent, but in the case like, let's say we, Mr. Stoll had literally physically went to the, went to the Robinson and stayed there with his, with the team for, for, for some time. And, uh, we plan to do that for their first two years of employment and, 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 um, I, I think it's a well-structured program and everybody, uh, along with the Director of Accountability and the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, they develop guidelines and, and rubrics and everybody's asked to do the same thing. So, uh, I think that, that's a highlight of this, um, of this new shared leadership. And, uh, again, I'll reiterate what, what I, what I, um, said earlier is that, uh, part of that shared leadership is really asking all the leaders, the principals, assistant principals and all central office, that when they are doing their, their, their goals and all of these people are evaluated by one of the superintendents, one of the four of us. And we look very carefully at that when they establish their goals, that their goals are aligned with the district, uh, strategic plan. Because when they are, we know at least there is some form of alignment there. And, uh, lastly, also when, what we had established is that we have a, uh, we have a quarterly open forum. I have, I meet with all the principals, I meet them of course when I go visit, but in that forum is really for them the opportunity to bring any concern they may have directly to, to my attention. I, I have an open door policy, not only with principal, but with, with anybody, parents alike and, uh, and they come whenever they want. But that forum, I think was very important because they, they end up sharing together and, uh, and trying to, um, address issues together. Um, a little bit, when I came in also, um, two years ago, one thing that, uh, I immediately noticed and I think most of you know and some others, is, is a little bit of a disconnect in the curriculum alignment between K eight and A twelve. The high school has always kind of been on its own and it's, it's, uh, it's a little, um, we, we've changed that. I think the high school now is, is, is closely aligned with, in curriculum with the rest of the, uh, the district. We really truly have a K through twelve alignment. We were, we're much more engaged in the high school. Um, the curriculum coordinators now, they don't have only their head of school to evaluate them, but they have their head of school and the assistant superintendent of curriculum. Cause it's really important not only to be good, but to be good and well-aligned with the K through eight, uh, model. And the same thing for the student services, not only that the coordinators, they had not only that they have their head of school that, that, that evaluates them, but they have deputy for social, student services to evaluate them. Uh, I think this model, it's not my model, it's a model that is successful, that exists out there and we just made sure that we implemented. It was not a model in existence before the, these past two years. Another goal that I, I had added was, um, to really keep us involved statewide with, um, with, with innovative educational assessment and, and, and accountability. Uh, accountability is, is, is the hottest topic statewide and, uh, how do we evaluate our schools? It, it's really important. When the state comes in and slaps you with a level four label, that just destroys your community. People, young people wanna leave, everybody gets scared and so forth, so it is really hot, but I, I don't think anybody believes that it is well done in the state. So there is a great deal of effort ever, by, by several groups in the state and how do we define a better accountability system? How do we measure our school? Is it fair to measure Lowell High School with, I don't know, Lexington's High School or Weston's High School or Holyoke High Schools for that matter? It, it's not, the parameters are different. So how do we define a better accountability system? And by the same thing, you've heard lots of complaints about standardized testing statewide, not is, not in, just in Lowell. And that's an effort that, that is really important statewide. It is an effort and what can we do? How do we develop a, a standard-based, uh, assessment test that is not standardized? That's something that really tell us truly about the development of the child, the development of the student. So I, it is, it is a thing that I've always been interested in for years and years, but it is also something that I, I made sure that we participate in. So as Lowell, you've heard me say that before, we belong to the Massachusetts Consortium of Innovative Educational Assessment and, uh, and we're one of the leaders there, we personally the co-chair of that task force and we work very closely with the urban school district, we work closely with the, with the, with DASI and the, uh, and, and the assistant, one of the associate commissioners there. And that's something that we plan to maintain because it, it really helps us statewide, but it helps us also in Lowell. Being part of that group, for instance, we were able to engage six of our schools to be able to get involved with this educational assessment alternative and develop, have the teachers develop it from bottom up. And we got, we also get some financing to make sure that we, we pay for the time of the teachers. We get ten thousand dollars per school. Um, and I think if we, we get now six schools and it's really important because now they can bring back that information and that PD that they get and disseminate it throughout the district. And we plan to maintain that, that, that effort. At this point is where the second part of the evaluation comes in, where you talk about the specific standards that the state says and, and it's really a lot of repetition of what is undone. Couple of, uh, I'll go very briefly on those, um, in the, in the instructional leadership. The first one is, is the standards is, is really the same as, um, as, as the student achievement and some of the stuff, the stuff that we talked about so far. So I'm, I'm gonna leave that for your reading, you'll see that there's a lot of, um, a lot of repetition in there. There are some highlights of how we met those standards, um, and, and, um, the, in the interest of saving some time, I'm gonna skip through directly to the standard two because that one is, has a little bit more information than was included in the goals. And in the standard two, the state wants to know, how do you handle your management and operations and they give you several criterias. Um, and the first one in the environment, I think some highlights in there is, um, that we did in the management is that, um, it was, as you recall, in the first year we did, we've done a, a, a restructure on the, on the finance and technology department, which we believe is, is getting us more focused. Is it the end all? Did we do it? Did we succeed? No, not at all. But we improved. We will hopefully one day be sitting here and say, yes, we succeeded, but how long is it gonna take to be fully optimal? A year, two, three? I, I do not know, but the important is not whether you will be fully optimum in a year, two or three, but the important is that you continue to improve. Uh, the same thing in some of the highlights here is that, that we've done, which I think have improved our management operations tremendously in the, is the, um, is the curriculum support. It was completely restructured. When you come in in the morning, except for the first maybe five, 10 minutes, you will never see our curriculum people in central office. They're all in schools. There's no more, you know, they all have offices, their offices are always empty. They come in, they get their task, they get their, what they need and they're out, they're in the schools. So they became really part of the schools. And some of the schools, that high needs schools such as the Robinson, the Sullivan, where we're trying to help those new principals, I have even asked them that they make their homes. Whoever's assigned to that school, make your home that school. And I know, I know for, um, uh, I, I know one of them, uh, in, in Robinson Student Services, that's her home now. She's, she's, she makes that her home and then she goes of course service to other schools, but when she's not, she's back in there. I think that, that redesign and restructuring completely, the curriculum and, you know, and the student services there is really is, is what is helping us dealing directly with the needs of the school. Another thing that we've changed drastically is the, the way we redesigned instructional technology. Instructional technology was part of technology department and it was much more about technology, much more by making sure those machines work and so forth, those, those board work. Uh, it shouldn't be that. It, it, instructional technology has nothing to do necessarily about technology, it has to do with instructional, the focus is on the first word, not the second. And, uh, we've restructured that completely with our instructional technologies is the same thing. I think those guys, you'll never see them in the central office, they're always in schools. And their focus is really working directly with the teachers, administration and making sure that they are equipped and they're, they get skills to dealing with our data systems, our softwares and so forth. Um, there were still some teachers to this date and we're working on it, this date who, who need help using simple things as smart boards, investment that you made, maybe even before I came, you bought smart boards. So it's about time to, to, to utilize those investments. And I think that we can see the results of that, um, outstanding. I attended several meetings with, uh, teachers in their common planning time, talking about the data, how teachers are using these, these data generated by those instructional technologies around student performance. It's, it's really, it's really a pleasure to see that, that it, you can see the fruits of that taking place. And I think the, the one that, um, is, is definitely something that we should never miss to, is the, I think we've have, and we probably have the best labor relations that, that, that we've ever seen in the, in, 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 at least I know in many of the districts I worked with. Uh, and that's really important, extremely important in many ways because when you have a good relationship with your labor groups, they're your partners. They help you tackle the challenges. If you have a very difficult situation, whether it's a, it's an individual situation with a, with a teacher, uh, they'll help you deal with it. Or sometimes a bigger situation, we're talking about a PD to all teachers, they're the ones who help you do that. And I think it's, it's really important to maintain good relationships with them. And, uh, and I think we have a really highly collaborative environment and, uh, we, leading to really, I, I, for the fast, past two years here, we've had very little resistance to change or, cause we run it, we work together, they're there, they make us aware what's the, you know, what we should be looking at and, uh, the pitfalls and making sure that we don't fall in and, 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 uh, and address those and, and we definitely has a much higher level increase of trust and, uh, which will only bear fruits, more fruits in the future. Uh, again, the, uh, the, uh, the, in the management operation area, I think one thing worth to highlight is the development of our new day school. Um, it's something that I think we should continue, we should grow, we should bring it home. Uh, it's a win-win. I, I, I can't see a single thing negative about that one. The, the parents want their kids closer, we want our teachers to be manning our own kids because they know them better and, uh, we'll, we'll continue and, and, uh, working towards that. And, um, and then one, one more worth on this page that I'm more, more thing highlighting is, is definitely the, uh, the initiative that our deputy is working with and leading the way with, with, uh, the, the Director of Special Education, which is really the expansion of PBIS. Uh, PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support Training, is, is, is a really important initiative and, um, it's one of those that you can, you really have to do it well. And it shouldn't be just about a checkmark. You can go around and you just put your checkmark and say, yes, I trained everybody, but did you really? Or you did everybody sit into the training? The big difference between the two. So I think we've seen a lot about sitting into the training and we're moving to, let's train well. So right now, we don't do too much sitting in the training, but we have all the student services out there really, really pushing on a daily basis, training people and making sure that, that they, they use the PBIS system because that's a proven system that reduces anxiety, reduces, uh, discipline problems and just help us improve our achievement. Uh, in that same area, on another criteria, the, the human resource development, I think the, um, uh, a couple of the highlights, as I said, we're focusing on the, as I mentioned earlier, when we talked about the goal, about the, the, uh, the hiring of the, the, um, the minorities, but more, more, more general, we, we have all those partnerships I mentioned, but one thing that I really would like to, to highlight here is again, that the, the renegotiation with UTL of a much fairer and more efficient teacher transfer policy. And that, that was really like, uh, a really eyesore, really problem for us, a big problem. And I think this year when we renegotiated that in a really fair way, more efficient way, uh, and the way we handle it is, is has helped us tremendously in, in dealing with the, uh, with that piece. And also another, another one with the, our partners at UTL is, is the, uh, is the reorganization of the LTA, the leader, the Lowell Teachers Academy. It's a, it's something that we do together as partners and, uh, we do a lot together. Uh, it allows us to bring in at an efficient cost PD to the teachers and it, with the help of UTL pushing that and promoting that, we get better participation from the teachers to, to engage in, in, in these classrooms. We also use it for our recruitment, that's the vehicle that we're using for the certification. So these certification courses that we'll be offering from the state will be offered through the LTA. So it's a win-win all. The teacher gets credit for it, they get certification, they get PD. We offer it at an extremely low cost to, to the city of Lowell and, uh, and it helps us improve all the way. Um, the, in terms of, uh, other highlights in the area of management operations, I think it's, it's just the, 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 the way we handle our meetings or, um, a, a couple of minor changes, they seem minor, they seem, yeah, like so not, not so big deal, but they really are in some ways. Like when we, we have some policies that we put into place and is that, for instance, when we meet in all, with all central office, if we're meeting with, uh, if we meet with one principal, we always try to meet at their school. It doesn't matter if five of us will move there, 10 of us will move there. It's easy for us to move then disturb a, a, a school leader, so we tend to try to go to them. If we meet more than one, we're meeting a few, we try to always make sure that it happens after school so we don't disturb them. Sometimes when we do have to meet because we have an all-day meeting, uh, we used to do the new policy is to make sure that, uh, we dispatch somebody from the cohort C with, because they don't meet at the same times and they go replace whoever is leaving. So there's always an additional adult there from central office. And, uh, I, I think I've been looking at, uh, most of the meetings and I, I, I'm very pleased with the way they handle, meeting agendas are very well-drone and, and well-established, communicated well in advance by all the, the assistant superintendents whenever they, they hold these, these meetings. In terms of, uh, one of the parts that the state likes you to be very focused on is this, the law and ethics and, and policies, that's really, uh, they're, they're, it's, it's an important issue. Um, I, I think we do pretty well. I think there isn't a single meeting that we, we, we get together to talk as leaders where we don't have a topic of law or, or policies or, or that, that, that we work with. We, uh, we work very closely with our labor attorney, I think we're almost daily working with them. Our two staff councils, uh, for special education are fully embedded with student services. They're, they're within student services offices and they work very closely with, with everyone and making sure that everybody is, is abides by the ethics laws and, and any other state laws, school laws. Um, and, and whenever appropriate, when, when we have issues of, that concern the city, vendors, matters of liability or so forth, we're, we're also in consultation with the city solicitor on that. Um, and during the past two years, I think we, uh, in, in terms of our fiscal system, which is another area within management system, I've talked about it earlier, uh, we've done complete transformations of, of, of the budget. I think we, we're through pains perhaps, but we are definitely improving it. If you look back at the past two, between last year's and the year before, you'd see that, uh, there was a, um, a, a, a serious improvement. One of our biggest challenges with remains, and it, it is always a, a challenge, is, uh, is, is the fact that our systems, now, now I'm talking about computer systems, software systems, still don't talk to each other. It, it's really difficult to do that. We're dealing with Munis for payroll and we're attached to the city for, for our, uh, purchasing and so forth through Munis, but all our other systems, you know, revolve around Aspen X2 and it's not always easy to make the do. So we take, we, we waste a lot of time really cross-checking everything and doing and, and, um, and, and it's just a lot of wasted effort. And this is gonna be definitely the effort that we wanna spend into the future. It's not simple, a lot of districts deal with that, we're not the only one dealing, dealing with that. Because when you have a, a system like, you know, like Munis, you've been working with it for years and years, it's not that easy to just wake up one day and say, you know what, let's take another one and let's move on. It's not that easy. Uh, it takes a long time. But we're working with that, with the city and, uh, and we continue to, uh, to try to figure out ways to do that. And there was one item that relate to this and, but also relates to previously in HR that I hadn't, uh, forgot to mention, is that we, one of the reasons being this is I have asked that we, um, engage a, uh, an HR auditor. Um, and one of the main reason, uh, is, is really this system, figuring out how we can develop our systems and, and try to be more modern, try to be more, uh, you know, addressing more of the problems that we have to address every day, forms that people want. the problems that we have to address every day, forms that people want, simple questions that people want on HR, payroll, things like that. I think that that's something that remains a challenge, that's something that we want to continue to work on as we go. And I think the, one of the things that we probably did much better, given all these challenges, is in the budget process. When I, I remember when I came in and I addressed, I had met with all the principals through the summer, I asked them if they didn't mind meeting with me, and we met in small groups, and we met with every single one of them around coffee, spent a couple of hours with, two to three hours with each group. And one, two themes that they kept telling me about, that they wanted to see me, I had asked them, played me, what is it that, if you had any two things you want to ask me to work on, what would you like me to work on? And two things that kept coming back, and one of them is definitely the budget. They want it to be part of the budget, because the budget was always determined and then sent to them, this is your allocation, they want it to be part of the budget. And I can assure you, these past two years, they were fully part of the budget, we engaged them and we work, we work with them all the way. And I think another thing also that I have seen is the, and the other thing, by the way, not related to this, but was the curriculum alignment. They felt very strong that they wanted to see more curriculum engagement and redefine the curriculum office, that's what led me to redesign the curriculum office to be school-based and focusing on schools. But going back to management and operations, I think they really appreciate the fact that we work early enough, we start usually quite early with them, working on the budget. This year, we developed again with them, in discussion with all the school leaders, a new equity model. It doesn't mean that every one of them is going to raise their hand and say, I love it. Some of them may have actually called you and say, I hate it, and may have complained to you. But it doesn't really matter, because it's, you have to work with the consensus. I think overall, you see what, you can't please everybody, but we, you're going to try to work with the consensus. So we developed a new equity model, because when you looked at our schools prior, you looked just like, say, the middle schools, and you didn't quite understand why in the world would we have more teachers of one kind, of this one and this one, yet we have six grade, six, say, classes of fifth grade, the same, or sixth grade or seventh grade. So we really focused on that this year. We looked at it carefully last year, we started, you know, working with it a little bit. This year was really where we looked at it and developed a new equity model that says, you know, we all know you need math, you need science, you need social, you know, you need social studies, whatever, then you need those teachers, let's make sure you have that in place. Now, next level, we address the special education, what type of special ed you have assigned to you, and ELL and so forth. And that new equity model that we work with is probably, I would estimate, around 72%, 75% through this year. We couldn't make it happen all at once, it's, we had, probably by next year, we'll be able to, next budget season, we will be able to apply it everywhere. So I think, I'll leave it at that with the, with this part. On a third standard is, relates, a lot of the things similar to what we talked about earlier, is the family and community engagement, that state really likes you to pay attention to that. And I think as we talked earlier, the participation of school councils and PTOs, the restructuring of the family resource centers, and the monthly parent liaison training that we have, to work with families, all of that addresses some of the indicators that the state would like us to focus on. In that same area is the shared responsibilities. I think, again, it's, we make sure that we're everywhere, we participate with all the collaborative, the, our partners. And a couple of highlights that we did in that community is now we have Katie's Closets, I know it might not be a big thing, but it is really a big thing for the kids who benefit from it, established in every school, that's worth mentioning. A lot of the other items, as you can see, are repetition of what we had talked about during the discussion about that goal. And I think the communication piece with the family engagement is also something that is, that is really important, and I think we've increased quite a bit. Can we do better? Sure we can, sure we will, as time permit to develop new ways and look in new ways, but we try to be there. I personally attend, I know that my assistant since do that as well, both student services as well as curriculum, attending parents' meeting, PTOs, you know, we try to be as many as we, we can't be everywhere, because obviously we're, we just can't be doing that. But we try to go, definitely when we're invited, if we're invited, we do not turn down the invitations, we go. And sometimes we just drop in, in various ways. We also maintain, you know, a lot of two-way communication with parents. As I said, my door is open, I know parents email me all the time, and I try to respond as much as I can, as fast as I can, and I know they email quite often my deputy Durkin, specifically because of, she deals with student services, so she gets, she gets a lot of communication from parents, and I think she's probably has one of the best communication and consistent systems and structures that, she's very good at it. If you email her, you will get a response. You may not like it all the time, but you will get it from her. Another standard that we work with is the establishing a professional culture. And again, we do that through the stuff that I mentioned earlier, which is the PD for our school leaders and instructional specialists. We did that this year through making sure that all, we have full-time math instructional coaches to make sure our math teachers are constantly coached into the standards at all elementary and middle schools. We do a lot of, the curriculum office is continuously involved with standard-based professional development, and we try to engage in all professional developments in school-based, whether it's clinical or support staff, they do that as well, they're getting involved, they're out there. We do a lot of things, you probably don't hear about it, because we don't have time to write anything about it. If we sit down to write about it, then we don't have time to do it. So we engage a lot more about doing it. I wish we had more people to help, to help, you know, communicate that to the rest of the community of what we're doing. Again, within the, within the same in the professional culture and the, I think one piece that is really important, the state focuses on, we like to focus on, is really that cultural proficiency. It becomes even more important for a district such as Lowell, because of the makeup of our, of our community. And we do quite a bit of that. We have a very strong partner, Project Learn, we work with, and we do quite a bit with them, and they continue to work with us in all of our recruitment efforts with that. But I know we've established cultural competency courses right within the LTA, the one that I was mentioning earlier, courses for teachers that they did. We provided training and courageous conversation last year throughout the high school programming for both teachers and students, and there were several, several events and efforts taken place there. And one more noteworthy is to mention is the, I think student services is doing an outstanding job in increasing the translation of documents for our families that use different languages, and they do the best they can. I know even in our all-call fall when we do, we have, we translate that to various languages so that the parents can understand it. So there is a really good, good understanding of that, and we, I think our team does, there's a pretty good, good work with that, given the minimal resources they work with. Again, it's the same thing within the professional culture in terms of communication, we talked about it before, but I think developing an open forum for transparent conversations with school leaders is really important, because they need to feel that they can speak freely to us about their concerns, and they do. They do, and we work very well with them, with that. And, you know, we also have, you know, we try to communicate with them via newsletters and anything that's happening, and try to maintain that communication piece alive and active. And we, you know, the continuous learning, we talked about it earlier through what we're doing with Research for Better Teaching, but another thing also is that our monthly administrative meeting, we kind of really changed them altogether, is that we used to, when I first came and we attended the first ones, is we meet to really talk about the problems or, oh, this, I'm having heat problems in there, so that we changed the tone of that a little bit to, from housekeeping to, yeah, those are still important, but we can communicate that in other ways throughout the day, we don't have to reserve a meeting of all the leaders for that. And really focus now, to very focused topics, to deepening the understanding and learning of the leaders. And these usually are led by one of our assistants, either deputy Durkin, if it's, if it happens to be in an area of student services or special education, if it happens to be in an area of curriculum, it'll be led by assistant superintendent for curriculum. And again, within the area of professional culture, is really dealing with the shared vision, and we address that, as I told, as I mentioned earlier, through making sure that when developing their own goals, that they're well-aligned with the rest of the institution, with a strategic plan and so, and so forth, and their own school plans as well. And finally, one area that is, I think, important is to always address is the, and pay attention to is the, within the professional culture standard, is the managing the conflict. A couple of highlights on there is the, I think the Department of the Student Services has a very, very well-established processes in dealing with anything that touches to your students, any kind of conflict that, you know, we have a student involved, they have very, very highly qualified people and very well-thought-out processes, we have, as I said, the two councils are involved with us on a daily basis, and there isn't a single conflict that happens that you would not find one of the two involved with. They will always be there to make sure that whatever way we address that conflict, that it is legal, that it is ethical, and we follow all the rules. So we, and they're continuously working on improving those processes as well. I think the, also the relationship with our unions has been incredibly, incredibly helpful in dealing with conflicts, in resolving conflicts. A lot of the problems, a lot of the problems we deal with, we, they get resolved before we even get to actually talk about them, and that is because of the open, very truly open collaboration we have with our labor unions to bring the problems and talk about them and see how we're going to resolve them. Just before this meeting, I stole an hour of time to make sure we sit down with Mr. Paul Georges, because we had two serious issues to talk about involving staff, and we addressed it, and I know we're going to address it well before it becomes a big conflict, and maybe before everybody even gets to hear about it. And that's really important to maintain that relationship. And the last thing, I think, if you want to really maintain, manage conflict, is really increase trust and increase accessibility. We do have, as I said, I do maintain the door, my door open, and it did happen many times during the past two years where teachers just wanted to talk to me, because they felt they wanted me to address something that they felt it was serious for them. And they come in, and we are very serious, we'll listen to them, and we address all the problem. So on that note, thank you very much, and as I said earlier, I'd be very happy to sit down with any one of you at your pleasure, whenever you want, between now and then, whether you're an existing school committee or new school committee, even if you don't have to vote on this one, we'd be happy to sit down with you and go over this and the goals or any ideas you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any discussion on this report? I'm starting.
I just have a question regarding next steps. So we are supposed to complete the evaluation by December 1st, so that means try to meet with the superintendent. Next week is Thanksgiving, and then the next week is December 1st. It really doesn't give us much time to try to meet with him. I just want to point that out, that's a difficult timeframe.
Well, why don't we try? If it doesn't work, just, we can always extend it. Any further discussion? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent place them on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Ms. Martin.
Just a quick question, so do we have the materials for us to do our part of this?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I handed out printed copies, if anyone, I know Mr. Gignac likes to always have the word copy, we'll email it to you. If anybody else would like to have the word, we'll be more than happy to email you that one directly, if you would like the word, okay. Yeah, we, Mr. Frisch distributed them earlier, and there are, hang on a second, here's here if you would like, if you didn't get one, we have a couple more here. Oh, here, I'm sorry. Mr. Frisch. All right, here they are. And I can email them to you as a word format.
I think they've been handed out to everybody.
So with the format, we just need to get those, the completed form back to you by December 1st as well?
Yes.
So the meeting happens, any meetings need to happen before that, and then we get that back to your office?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Martin.
Yes, I had a question for the superintendent on the AP participation program, Mass Insights. Have any other, like, cities done this program? Have they seen great results with it?
Yeah, my experience with, I had, I had used them in Winston-Den, and we more, more than doubled our participation in, of students, and, but more important than that is also just by having better certified, trained and certified teachers in AP, teaching AP, we really pushed the scores up for, because they were better trained in teaching AP classes.
That's all, thank you.
And we have a budget transfer, the amount of $48,721 from various departments to various departments. Do we have a motion approved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Gendron and Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During that wonderful presentation, my laptop died, so I don't have it in front of me. But I noticed when I was reviewing this that it, it's appearing as this is student activities accounts, is that correct, or is it general supplies?
General supplies, it also has student activity accounts as well. We did reallocate both based upon the October enrollments.
Okay, some of them look pretty large, is that?
Yeah, for instance, the...
Is that what this enrollment report was given to us for? Is it related, or no?
Not that one.
Okay.
But the one I, is in your packet, is related. So some of the schools, one was the Rogers had a large increase due to the additional kids, that 100 kids that went to the school.
Okay. And we don't, that's okay, we're going to have a finance subcommittee meeting in the next few weeks, and we'll, we'll talk about it further.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? The chair would entertain a motion approved, motion approved, made and seconded, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
The next item is a school choice tuition revolving fund, we have a motion approved, motion approved by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Discussion on the motion, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
And the final item on the regular agenda is a discussion and action on the enter judgment, enter judgment of the Superior Court regarding Lowell High School site. Chair would entertain a motion to just place it on file?
Sure.
By Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted?
Do you need a vote not to move forward, or for the committee not to formally not appeal? Is that what you're, I'll think?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would appreciate if we could take a formal vote of the action in open meeting?
Sure, I'll make a motion that the school committee goes on record of not moving forward with an appeal.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hoey. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
And they had one major request and that is to bring back Baked Potato Day at Lowell High School. So if there's anything I can accomplish this term, it is to bring back Baked Potato Day. And I know my, my friends at Aramark will truly appreciate that coming from me.
I'd like to invite you to that day.
I will be there.
To eat the potato.
I will be there if you buy. Thank you.
We'll give you a cold potato.
I think everybody, Mr. Gignac, appreciates that you've often taken the lead on food issues. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to bring your attention, we do have one more item that we need to deal. There's an item that you put on hold last week, so it's still hanging on hold. I'd like to clear that up and that's the item of travel for the wing school. And since then, you had asked a question about, about this, the policy. We do have the policy. The policy does not prevent necessarily doing it during school days, it just makes sure that the teacher who does it presents an explanation of what they do during the school days and we've been assured that they will be involved in learning during that time. And by the way, this, this trip has been approved even before my time, were years and years before my time, doing it pretty much at the same period of time. So this has been tradition.
We have a motion on this? A motion by Mr. Gignac to approve the trip, seconded by Ms. Martin. Discussion? Yes.
So the policy as it reads, as and as was distributed to all of us, does, absolutely, it is, it can happen that it can use school days, but it requires that the teacher provide the, not just telling us that they're going to, the itinerary, it's linking it to specific standards, curriculum standards that are established within whatever area of study is being impacted. And it also is expected that it will come with the packet so that when we receive the request, we get all the information together at the same time. So, I mean, that was the intent behind the policy that was put in place years ago and I know this trip has gone on for a while, but it should have adhered to that policy.
Right. As I said, this trip has been going on for a while, the same way. I did not seek to do any changes to it. Now that we know, I know I have to ask our assistant superintendent of curriculum to immediately look into it after the day you asked me the question. She did, she contacted Mrs. Stoll, she contacted, I can have Ms. Desmond talk to it if you want, I mean, about this trip personally, but I think if we want, in fairness to them, if we want to really impose it exactly as the intent of the policy, we should do that, starting, you know, next trips and asking them to present that with the packet.
I mean, it's a policy. So it's a policy that exists, it's a policy that's existed since twenty, two thousand and nine, right? I mean, I think that was the date on it, I'm going on memory from just when I read it. So I don't want to hold these kids back from doing this trip. I'm in favor of trips, but there are certain things that we expect when we, when we approve a trip. I don't think it's outlandish for us to expect a policy will be adhered to and that we'll get the information we need so that we can justify saying, you're taking two, three days out of school. And, you know, so that we can support that. I mean, we want to be supportive, we're simply asking to get the information we need to make that choice. Thanks.
Ms. Darney.
Your Honor, I'd like to support Ms. Martin's contention. The trip is going to happen, it's supposed to happen in May, right? It's, they're going to be out a week. I think to require that they, that they justify what the learning is going to be, it's written in the policy. I think we should delay the vote till we get that information. And I would also strongly urge them to try to change the time of the trip in the future to not take a week out of school.
Mr. Gignac, do you want to withdraw the motion?
Sure.
Okay. So, Mr. Gendron.
Well, I don't know why we couldn't support, I mean, I talked to Principal Stoll about this and, you know, apparently this is a trip that has happened in the past and, you know, there is intent to make it based, learning-based. I don't know why we couldn't go forward and approve the trip with the, with the condition that we require them to provide us a report on how they intend to make it, you know, learning-based. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to stop this trip, I want it to go forward, planning is already underway, people are excited about it, we shouldn't do it. But I think that we need to be careful about authorizing trips that take a week out of school and when we do, it ought to be accompanied by a report that shows how it's going to be learning-based. So I would like to, before you withdraw that, Mr. Gignac, I'd like to propose that I amend the motion to say we require Principal Stoll to deliver us a report detailing how it's going to be learning-based.
Okay. The motion is withdrawn, so how about a motion by you to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve.
With the stipulation?
With the stipulation that a report be delivered to us indicating how it's going to be learning-based.
And when do you want that report?
By our next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Gignac. Discussion on that motion? Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All in favor, all opposed? Stand adjourned.[1758.46]